First is to review and approve the agenda. If there are any changes to the agenda that anyone wants to make. I don't see any. Yes, oh, the changes have already been made on this revised sheet, and I'm assuming that we will go with that. But let's have a show of hands or a motion first about the revised version of the agenda. Is that approved? Yes, thank you. And seconded by Sherri, thank you very much. All those in favor of the revised agenda, please signify by raising your hands. And it is unanimous. Yes, okay. We have the minutes for the December 22 meeting. And are there any changes to those minutes that anyone would like to make? Yes.
I just wanted clarification when we were talking about, because I got a question about this. When we were talking about the capital budgets, if that did not include on the schools and the schools' capital needs. We didn't include the Saks Auditorium project, as we all know.
Yes.
But I didn't want to create any confusion in the public because it wasn't mentioned in that report.
Yes.
That project wasn't also going to go forward and have some capital needs as well.
Do we want to include that in there, do you think? Dr. Litzey, would it be a... Is...are people enough aware of it that they would be aware that it's happening? Or should we have it listed someplace in here?
Just clarification, because the way it was labeled, it was schools, facilities, capital plans. So the Saks project would be in addition to that.
Do you have a recommendation that you're making on it?
I think that could just be a comment from me on the minutes.
For tonight.
That appear in today's minutes.
Okay, so in addition to tonight's minutes, not changing the last minutes.
Right, yes, because I didn't say it last week. I didn't say it then.
Right, because we didn't discuss it at the last minute. We'd be adding something new to the minutes that isn't there. Okay, so with that in mind, is there a motion to approve the present minutes? Thank you. Allison, second. Penny, all those in favor signify, please, by raising your hands.
Allison, can I...
Yes.
I was here at the meeting. I was here at the meeting. I didn't forget.
Yes, she was at the meeting. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have a second on the motion from Mrs. Ration, I think? And all those in favor, please raise your hands and signify. That is one, two, four, five people that were here that were able to do that. Okay. We're moving to the next item in the agenda, which would be comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to a subject. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this point? There being no one coming forward from the audience, we will then move on to the first action item, which is the 2015-16 Superintendent's Proposed Budget, the first read. Dr. Litzey, would you like to introduce that for us?
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. Happy New Year to everyone, if I haven't had a chance to say that already. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday. It was pulling in this evening. I think the high school parking lot was as empty as it's ever been. And I think everyone had their first day back and said they still want to make their vacation last just a little bit longer. So I want to say thank you to all of our administrators and everybody who's here tonight with us to go over our first read of the Superintendent's Proposed Budget. Lots and lots of hours and thought and sweat and tears went into putting this together for you tonight. And definitely, I'm personally appreciative that everyone's willing and able to come back, come out tonight on the first day back and begin their 2015 year with a 14-plus-hour day on our behalf. So thank you, guys. I've handed out a packet of new pages for your book. The...as you know, the books were delivered on Friday afternoon, and we continue to go through them and refine them and to make some changes. These new pages should replace the existing pages that you have, following the instructions on the top. Essentially, they deal primarily with the salary lines and a couple of spots. And it has to do with creation of new cost centers in our program and culling the data out of those cost centers. Those pages do not change any of the bottom line, any of the summary data in the first portion of the book, which we'll be talking about tonight. And actually, tonight we'll go through the different portions of the book as the proposed budget, and I'll spend a little bit of time doing that as an overview. And then afterwards, we'll have the opportunity to discuss it, talk about some of the drivers, talk about some of the next steps, and ask questions of our administrative team and, you know, our central office cabinet and all the folks that are here with us tonight. All right? So while you are swapping out pages and putting things together, I will begin just with talking a little bit of general terms about Board of Ed budgets. But again, before I dive in, I do want to thank specifically Nancy, Gary, Frank, Jill, Darlene, and all of the principals and each of the cost center managers, as we now call them. You know, Lizette, Alan, Rob, Scott, really everybody, Bob, everyone, Jay Egan, everyone who's been a part of putting this budget together. It has been an interesting process, certainly. I thought I had it all figured out coming into the position, having done this at a high school for the last eight years and middle school before that. But I'll tell you, pulling it all together is quite a complex task. It would be impossible to do this without, you know, Nancy, Frank, and everyone else who's involved with this throughout. So I want to thank them. And I also want to thank the board for all of your input and help in sort of making some decisions and piecing this together. You know, it is a process, and this...we began the process a few months ago. This is our initial conversation and discussion in a formal way, now that we've had and received the feedback from the workshop and the other conversations we've had, for us to begin the approval process of this budget, both here as a Board of Ed and then, of course, with Board of Selectmen, Town Council, Board of Finance, and others. So thank you for all of the input and help and guidance you provided along the way, and I look forward to a lot more of that going forward. So this year's proposed budget is a blueprint for resourcing our district's mission and goals. It has been developed using the guiding assumptions that our community expects in pursuit of our mission, and it's a way for us to meet our commitments to the children, families, and staff that comprise our entire community. New Canaan is recognized nationally as a premier district, and our goal is to continue to provide our students with the opportunities and advantages that earn the designation of and which then result from such status. Our success as a district is characterized by both breadth and depth. We're proud of the extraordinary return on investment delivered to the community over time, and we're grateful for the vision and the commitment that creates the conditions in which students and educators can consistently grow and achieve at the very highest levels. In crafting this proposed budget, we worked to simultaneously provide for a highly effective and responsive educational system while also practicing the discipline associated with good stewardship of all the resources. At the discretion of the board, this proposed budget reflects all of the elements that were identified through discussions and deliberations as addressing educational and infrastructure needs. We are now prepared to provide the board with information and perspective to help guide deliberations and decisions regarding our fiscal year 16, 2015-16, operating and capital budgets, which will be approved, which we aim to have approved, on January 20, 2015. There are several primary themes that guided our work as we put all of this together, as you take a look. One was a focus on sustaining and deepening system-wide excellence in a climate of increasing enrollment. As we've talked about a bit and will continue to talk about tonight, the projections are that our enrollment will continue to increase for the foreseeable future. So some of our challenges around that are maintaining our class-sized guidelines in such an environment, meeting the supervision and custodial needs in such an environment, and also being able to respond to unpredictable enrollment patterns at the K4 level. Improving student achievement as defined by our district goals. Looking to increase opportunities for students in STEM and related areas. Support the continuing implementation of RTI, Response to Intervention, and Related Programming, which is something that we are highly successful in now, and we're looking to continue. Developing and supporting and nurturing our instructional leadership team, which focuses on developing and supporting professional learning communities at all of our buildings throughout the district. And of course, we're going into the third year of our Teacher Evaluation and Professional Learning Plan, TEPOL, and continuing our focus on that implementation and calibration and training and use to improve instructional practice. Continuing our focus on safety and security of students and staff. Continuing our work with our campus monitors at each building and continuing to work to train staff and others through our Crisis Advisory Board and other opportunities as they exist throughout our district, state, and even regionally. Looking at leveraging our current investments in technology to increase our educational effectiveness, our staff efficiency, and our district communications. Things like our Phase 2 network upgrades that we have in our capital plan and what we're talking about a little bit later. Some of the changes we're looking to make, like repurposing existing machines by upgrading some of their capacity in order to extend their lifecycle, and the allocation of technology resources that's aligned with our district vision of purposeful, grade-specific integration. And then to continue the effective stewardship of all district resources. Our five-year capital plan, which we'll talk about, which focuses on meeting urgent needs while preparing for eventual responsibilities. Sustainable and predictable five-year capital plan for technology services. And then looking and continuing to identify synergies that exist, such as our six-day course cycle, combining levels and low electives, combining courses and low enrollment electives at the high school, and do things such as that to maximize staffing efficiencies. So those themes guided us in our work as we were going through. And I just wanted to quickly show again the duration of our process, now that we've kicked it off this evening, and the collaboration that exists throughout. You know, there are certainly many areas of our town, many different groups, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, the Town Council, who all take an interest in the work that we do, take an interest in our budget each year. And we'll be working with them, talking with them, as we go through this process together. So before we go into our next year's proposal, it's important to take a few minutes to look at our current performance, to identify some benchmarks, to talk about how we're doing in light of our existing resources. Back in July, we looked at together and reframed a little bit our long-range district goals. But in looking back in years past, you see that we've had a sustained focus and commitment to very similar goals for a long time. By being consistent and stable, it allows us to...the result to be our work in aligned and consistent ways. And then as a result of that work, we see strong outcomes year after year as a result of these efforts. I know you're all very familiar with these, so I won't read them to you. Setting goals is the first step to turning the invisible into the visible, so thinking about our goals and where we want to go. So what have these goals yielded through the years? What has been the return on investment here, both through the efforts and the investment of the community, the investment of the Board of Education, the investment of town bodies, all of us together? Well, on a district level, we've received great external recognition of our success. Some of them are right here. Others, which I think you're probably aware of, are things such as our outstanding special education programs, like our launch program that we have at our preschool at West. The FLESS program that's been highly successful, working now with our youngest grades and giving students an opportunity to learn the world language in an embedded way in their practice. The...our focus on safety and security resulted last year in our being awarded from KERMA the Risk Management Achievement Award for creating a safer school climate for students and staff. These are external kinds of things that we've...external recognition, and there's more, plenty more. This slide, when I first made it, as the ones that are coming up, was probably six times as long, so the font was about eight on the screen. So it says, you know, "I'm going to take those off, put a couple of them up, but when we publish it to the website, we'll put the eight-size font, and people can enlarge it, and they can see some more of our accolades." But that's, you know, some of the things that have happened at a district level. But I think it's also important to drill down a little bit more specifically, to look at our schools and think about how we're doing at a school level. For instance, looking at the high school, identifying a few benchmarks that we use internally to think about how we're doing and sharing those as part of our, really, our celebration of the success that we've had through the years. The 99% graduation rate, you see the numbers here, very strong results on a variety of measures that we use. And I think it shows the past investments that the community has made. K-12, how they've yielded these kinds of great results for our students, families, and the You see, the...we've talked a bit about AP scores, you know, and AP courses and opportunities for students. Since 2011, 40 more students are taking AP or took AP last year. 141 more exams were given, and 93% scored a three or better, which is the exact same score, percentage score that we had back in 2011. So as we've looked and expanded these programs, and we've looked and provided more opportunities for students, they are yielding results for us that are measurable and we see. And that's the type of work that we look to continue in this budget as we think about it by '16. But it's...so some of the things that...other things at the high school that I think are particularly noteworthy, but again, this slide will have quite a few more bullets on the web. Are 10 National Merit Semifinalists and 19 Committed Scholars in the Class of 2015. One very particularly kind of special thing this year is each year Connecticut selects two students from across the state to represent the United States, be a part of the United States Youth Senate Program, and represent Connecticut as part of that program and go to Washington. Both students this year are members of the Class of 2015 in New Canaan High School. And according to the people who put that program together, we think that's the first time that's ever happened. That's a nice statement of our success here with our kids. You know of the recognition that we receive in athletics, recognition in the arts. Last...just in 2013-14 alone, we were the FCAC Champions in football, ice hockey, boys' golf. We won the FCAC Team Sportsmanship Award in gymnastics. We were CIAC State Champions in football and in boys' golf. And that's in 2013-14. Of course, next year, when we're talking about what happened in 2014-15, we'll have even more to add to the list. But the recognition in the arts, I think, is equally important. And it's just important to note, at the high school this last year, 2013-14, approximately 300 students performed and participated as cast, crew, or musicians in one or more of the productions that we had. Stepping Out, Tom Sawyer, Thoroughly Modern Millie, Little Woman, and our 25th Annual Drama Festival, SNAP. The theater students received awards for Best Musical, Best Performance by a Couple or Duo in a Musical, Best Dancing, Best Sound Design and Execution, and Best Original Program Cover Design or Artwork. And those are statewide awards that our theater program won. It goes beyond that, of course. We have also students winning awards in our art program for the visual portion of our visual and performing arts. We had nine students who had their work accepted from over 600 entries at the Carriage Barn's annual photography show. Two students received Gold Key Awards for Digital Arts and Photography. Four students had their work selected for display at the Norwalk Community Center. We also had lots of success in our musical...music program as well. We had eight instrumental students and six choir students who were invited to join the Western Regional Performance Ensembles. And 10 of our students performed Mailer's First Symphony with the Norwalk Symphony Orchestra back in October. So you see, in all these different areas, we're seeing pretty remarkable student success. But I thought it would be a little unfair if I only focused on the high school, because that's where...what I know and been a part of myself directly. So I want to also think a little bit and talk a little bit about some of the great success our middle school has had. Our middle school was identified as a School of Distinction for Highest Overall Performance by the Connecticut State Department of Education. A new website that came out this year, we talked about this a little bit, niche.com, and they look at different areas for school districts. It's more of a...it's a holistic-type measure, and they rate them based...and in order to...their mission is to provide people who are interested in moving or joining a community, provide them with the best information possible so they can make the most well-informed decision prior to moving. So that website ranked Saks Middle School as the number-one middle school in Connecticut. Saks has a robust response intervention program, which is committed to moving every child forward, which is a bit...sort of takes the idea of no child left behind, but takes it a significant step forward by talking about our goal is to make sure that every student in our care improves while they're with us. And we were able to move them all forward by showing continuous growth on both formative and summative assessments. That focus on the whole child, on every child, and moving those children forward, I think has a...well, results in things like the recognition from niche.com. We have our best practices-based grade-level structures with our teams over there, our thriving visual and performing arts program. There are over 100 students last year participated in the fifth and sixth grade production of Sleeping Beauty, and over 75 participated in the seventh, eighth grade full-stage musical production of Anything Goes. Students are presenting their artwork again. Choral music band orchestra students are showcasing their skills. Band and choir students participated in the Western Regional Band and Choir Festivals, Fairfield County Strings Festival, Music in the Parks Festival, where they received a superior rating when they were adjudicated. So Saks, again, significant return on our investment. So then we also have to just take a minute to recognize the great work going on in our elementary schools. You know, with three elementary schools, one of the things I think that really helps them to stay at the highest levels of performance is how closely they work together to align instruction, to be sure that we're meeting state standards, but also developing a curriculum and instructional practices that ensure that we exceed the mandated standards in the work that we do. They are...again, our response to intervention system there is very strong and supports the work that we do. The same website, niche.com, named our three elementary schools the top three in the state. That's a pretty deep pool when you think of all the elementary schools across Connecticut. So I think that's interesting to note. State Department of Education identified them as excelling schools, and all three were listed in the top 10 in Connecticut. So...and again, in our elementary schools, I think one of the things we do so very well is provide them with rich opportunities in music and in the arts, where we have students who are taking strings classes, band, choir, others at the elementary school, which that, I think, carries up as they come through middle and the high school and helps in our overall performance. So I could do a whole presentation just on how well we're doing, but we're here for a little bit more than that tonight, too. So...but it does lead to ask the question, why are we a premier district? What are we...we're doing so well on so many indicators. You know, what is it that is...are these ingredients that make this school district as successful and as, you know, the thriving place that it is? Those are questions that we asked ourselves as we were looking and thinking about the budget, putting it together. Where will we allocate our resources so that we can be sure we continue on this path, and we also capitalize on opportunities as they exist, different leverage points that might be there? So we talked about what are our priorities? And then how do we balance all of these things? How can we be responsive to our stakeholder groups? Because as I stand here, I want nothing more than our district to be the very best district that it can possibly be. And we need to balance those with other needs that exist as well, so that we can create a budget that meets our needs, the needs of our kids, and is responsive and shows that we're good stewards of the resources that we have. So in that regard, there's some core concepts that sort of frame out, that undergird the budget proposal that you're about to see. The belief that our sustained success is the direct result of the investment the community has made and continues to make in its public schools. Again, I'm not going to read all of these to you, but our challenge is always to continue meeting our obligations, the community's high expectations of sustained excellence, partnered with continuous improvement, and our standards for excellence for all of our students, while simultaneously meeting the community needs for low overall budgetary increases. So number three, I think, is very important, and we're going to be spending some time talking about that tonight when we get into the numbers a bit, which is this proposed budget to be fully understood. It needs...we need to understand that it's comprised of multiple drivers, that some are obligatory and some are discretionary, but those drivers are significant numbers as we look at these. And they do drive the percentage of where we are. And then number four, which is those budget...those drivers are there as a result of meeting our responsibility to present an initial budget that fully funds all known costs in anticipation of possible adjustments by the board afterwards as a result of deliberations. Coming to you now, for example, when we talk about the insurance number, or we talk about our excess costs, and we'll get a little bit...we'll get more detail about that as we go through, but making no assumptions on that until the full cost is known and the discussion is had, and then in deliberation with the board, if adjustments are made, we would go from there. Your budget is presented to you in a three-ring binder for just that reason. Ultimately, when the Board of Ed votes on and approves the budget and adopts the budget for the 2015-16 school year, that will then be in a bound copy, and that's what we'll go forward to the town bodies and things as the Board of Education budget. But the idea here is this is an initial presentation, and then conversation and workshop and deliberation together will lead us to the final board's budget, whatever that's going to be as we move forward. So how do we sustain excellence in our school environment while also finding ways to improve results? Well, we do it through our programs and then by trying to contain our budget drivers. This is similar to the slide that you saw at the workshop, but the idea is that we do continue to enhance our programs, and we look to try to find ways to contain our drivers where we can. There are some that get added that we have to deal with, such as, again, the pool rental, which was in last year...uh-oh. All right. Be right with you. Which was in last year but was cut as a result of the budget reductions and when the pool didn't go forward. The...it's okay, I got it. That would be the quickest 70 slides I've ever gone through. There we go. Sorry about that. So we contain the drivers and expand and extend the program. So we'll talk about that in a little more detail as we go through. But as we get into the numbers, and we're about to, I promise, please always keep in mind what they do, what they ultimately represent, which is the collective commitment of all members of the New Canaan Educational Community to provide a premier education that serves all students and the greater New Canaan community in powerful, meaningful, and lasting ways. And we, as a district, remain committed to our mission of building the character competence and courage to change the world with all of our students. So the proposed 2015-16 budget, this is a page in your binder as well, but you're welcome to use the handouts of the slides. This is the overall view that puts it in context of the last couple of years. It is a request, this initial proposal is a request for $4.04 million increase, which is exactly 5% of an increase year to year, over the $80,870,000 from the year before. As I mentioned before, it's comprised of multiple drivers that we'll be talking about a bit. But this slide also includes some enrollment and some other information, because that's where we're going to begin as we dive into the discussion a bit around the enrollment. But you see the percentage increase and where it sits in relation to the last couple of This breaks it out a little bit more, taking our budgets from 2002, 2003, up till today's proposed. And you can see the trend, and you see that the 5%, while as an initial, is a little bit higher than the last. is a little bit higher than the last couple of years. If we go back a few more years, you see it's more in line with where things were. The, again, it's an initial for our discussion tonight, but it gives you that historical perspective of what, those are not proposed budgets, those are the approved budgets year So this is a familiar chart, and the percentages don't generally change all that much here. What this does is take the 2015-2016 budget and looks at the eight categories, objects that we have in our budget as we put it together, and we'll be going through each one in a bit. But it takes those and it shares what percentage each of those is of the overall budget proposal, the $84 million budget proposal. And you can see that our salaries are 64.3%, and our benefits are 16.54%, but you can see how each one breaks out. So starting, or taking the $84.9 million budget, break it down into these eight categories. We use total salaries, benefits, contracted services, property services, purchase services, supplies, equipment, and other as the objects for each, for our budget. Those combine to create our total budget. What we'll do tonight is just talk briefly about each one and any, you know, sort of significant changes within each one. Again, this is all the operating budget that we have. If you look at the change, of course, you see three areas that are changed most significantly, which are total salaries, benefits, and then purchase services. For the more visual, the top graph is percent change by category, and you see benefits is going up about 16%. Purchase services are going up, property services as well. Equipment is going down, you know, by about $50,000, I think, if I have that right. Yep, a little over $50,000. Or again, to put that into perspective, because percentages are always difficult comparisons when the total number is very different, you know, percentage of a large number is a lot smaller, percentage of a small, the dollar change by category. You can see our contracted services, supplies, equipment, and other are essentially flat in the dollars. Our salaries and benefits, and then purchase services are driving as we look at our overall. And that's not unexpected, right? Because education is a people business. The people that work here at Human Capital, that is our primary asset. Salaries are at $54,647,824. They're 65% of the overall proposed budget. The increase in salaries amounts to 1.6% of the overall 5% increase that we have proposed. This number does include the new positions that we're going to talk about in a bit, which are due to, primarily due to enrollment. The benefits is 17% of the overall budget and 2% of the overall 5% increase. So if you put salary and benefits together, it gives you 82% of the overall budget, again, which is to be expected, because we are, as an educational institution or district, generally salaries do run about 80, 81, 82% of the overall budget, salaries and benefits, because we're in a people business. What's left, the remaining 18%, covers all the other costs, includes things like our transportation for regular and special education, the outplacement costs I mentioned before, electricity, heating fuel, rent, rental for the central office building, educational programming, supplies, materials, textbooks, curriculum development revision, co-curricular programming, and all the things that we do to respond to state and federal mandates. So, we, I think we stretch that 18% quite a bit. We get, we got a lot, a lot done with that, and that's where we focus. So, we're going to begin looking at that first object that we have, which is our total salaries, and it is a $1,327,515 increase to the salary account year over year, an increase of 2.49%. It's mainly contractual, based on the agreements with our six employee unions, and the board has made a conscious effort to try to regulate, negotiate contracts that are reflective of today's economy, and I think that's important to note. The, as I mentioned, the proposed budget that you have includes the new positions, and we'll get a little bit more detail about that in a little bit. So, currently, when we look, well, and our new staffing really is primarily enrollment-driven, and that's what we're going to talk about. So our current enrollment, when we look at it back in October 1, you've got this page, this is not an easy slide to look at. The idea, I just wanted to, a quick reminder, if you needed it, to have a sense of where we are as far as our sections go. And we're running at 82 elementary sections, 60 sections at the middle school, and, well, and the high school varies due to enrollment in different classes and things, a little more difficult to count. But those, K8 is really where the class sizes matter at this point, as we look at our number of sections. So, if all things were the same, we could plan on starting next year with 82 sections of the elementary school and 60 of the middle school. But as we know, our projections are such that they're not anticipated to stay the same. When we look at, again, we spent some time already, I know, going through our enrollment, but when we look at enrollment, and in putting this together, I was going back through some of the previous presentations, back to 2008, 2009, and it was interesting, back then the projections were all going the other way. You know, they were, they were declining through the years, if any of you remember that, and so some decisions were made based on that around staffing and things, but that's, I think, primarily because that was the forecasted trend in the state. The other school districts were starting to see and anticipate that their enrollment would go down, and as we've heard, that is what's happening to many of the districts in the state, even some around us. However, our trend is showing to be the opposite. Our trend is showing to be an increase for the, over the next, you know, four or five years, as we look at it at least. And then when you go out more than five years, of course, it's a little less reliable. But when we looked at our enrollment, and when Gary presented that for us back in October, you know, we really was about, our story is an increasing enrollment year over year for, according to those predictions, for the next 10 years. So, all things don't stay the same, and specifically where the enrollment is hitting the hardest in the next couple of years is with Saks. And these between next year and up to 1920, these are students essentially that we already have in our system. So these are predictable size increases that we can make as we look at. So, another way to look at it, to break it down a little more specifically at Saks, is to look at the different grade levels and to sort, to see how, how the students are projected or anticipated to be moving through the grades in the next couple of years. This year is right across the top, and as, as you can see, those are our actual numbers as of October 1 in there. So when you look at 15-16, you take this year's sixth grade and you move it to seventh grade, you see the, the projection is that they'll go up by a couple of students, and that is the largest class that we have in our district. If it does come true next year, it'd be 373 students in seventh grade. So the move from 312 to 372, 73 requires us to take a look and to consider what we can do in order to manage that. You'd look also at the eighth grade, and the eighth grade next year is predicted to have exactly the same number of students that it has this year. So the opportunity to shift staff down, which is something that we've been doing, as you've, as you've heard, year by year, as larger grades have come up, we've been able to move some out of a smaller grade in order to cover for the larger grade, that, it doesn't look like that's something that we can accomplish next year based on the fact that our number is predicted to be stable in eighth grade year over year. As we go out, we see that eighth grade in 16-17 will be jumping up by another 60 students, where, and if, if this stays true, the seventh grade next year, or in 16-17, would be dropping by a few, so there may be some opportunity to move some teachers from seventh to eighth, but we have to review that and see what the ramifications of that would be as well. But in the, in the immediate need here, it's that shift from the current sixth grade into the seventh grade, and the jump in enrollment from 1292 to 1335, on its path to eventually, if this all holds true, getting to over 1,400 in 2020, 2021. So when we look at next year's enrollment and we start to chart it out, what we're seeing is, and this should be a page that you replaced in your binder? What we're seeing is that the enrollment at the elementary schools is predicted that we'll need another homeroom, so we would go from 82 to 83 sections at the elementary level. That will, you know, it's impossible to know exactly what school it would be because of sort of how the enrollments fluctuate at the elementary, and I think we showed you this last summer, just how carefully we look at these numbers and work through these numbers up to the last minute as we go. But looking at the forecast and the enrollment predictions, the conservative approach is to budget for one additional section at the elementary level, looking at these numbers. The, looking at Saks Middle School here, that 373, if you read down the seventh grade, that moves that, the number of sections there from 14 to 16. So that's an increase of two sections there, which is enrollment-driven, which brings us to an average class size of 23 students. Now, there is some variability in that because of the, some of the leveling and things that happen, that go on, where we might have some that are larger, some that are a little bit smaller, but on average, teachers to student ratio for the homerooms brings us about there. And again, the eighth grade would be consistent with where it is now, with the 16 homerooms. So that's going up to, two sections there. Overall, when we look at our increasing enrollment, there's actually, there's a variety of different needs that we've considered and discussed and that we're putting, presenting to you tonight as part of the proposal. There were others, as you heard, some, I think, at the workshop, that we've had to consider deferred for now as we try to work through most immediate needs. At Saks, it's the two FTEs for additional teachers for the homeroom sections. It's also to add two supervisory aides due to the increased enrollment and the additional supervision needs there, and also to add a custodian, and I'll get to that in a little bit. It's the elementary teacher, it's the district, at a district level, it's an addition of .5 FTE for social work, which is in response to the school climate mandates that require us to develop a comprehensive system of school-based climate teams and to coordinate these teams and these efforts. We'll talk a little bit more about that, too. And although there's nothing specific in the budget around FTEs, we have to continually review our specials and our Unified Arts Program and the teachers therein to be sure that they're meeting the needs, and I think Jill and the principals, K8 have been working around the six-day rotation, which has been a significant efficiency for us in those You know, when we go out to the market to hire teachers, one of the things that candidates ask for is our salary stack, right? What's the salary schedule look like? Are, it's important to note that when we look at our area and the districts around us, we're competitive, but we're not first, you know? We, we're careful as we go through and when we, when we negotiate with our teachers. You can see New Canaan across the top, and then our rank as we go through and do that. But I also included in here, as you've seen in years past, the salary schedule for Bedford, which is just our neighbor right over the border there, because I think it just shows a little bit of a wider lens around teacher salaries a little bit, and there is a similar pool that we compete with around, if you could go to New Canaan, you can go to Bedford, you can go to different areas. And it is true, the schools over, over the line in Westchester County do pay higher. So you're left with a question, why would somebody then come to New Canaan? And I believe, and it's shown time and again, that it's our culture of professionalism and our commitment to empowering our staff to do their very best in service to student learning. It's the positive relationships that we nurture and develop and have, it's the positive work that we do, and the support of the community, the board, and others for our teachers in New Canaan that make this such a desirable place for them to come. The salary is competitive, but I think that's our advantage, the positive relationship between teachers, students, parents, administrators, board, the town, everyone altogether, that really makes this a place for people, that people want to come to. I mentioned the school district social worker. This position, this is a .5 position, so it's someone who's on staff and they would be going, yeah, that would be going to a person who's already here to make that person a full-time. It would focus on the school climate work district-wide, coordinating the school-based teams, working with administrators, faculty, students, parents, developing and implementing continuous improvement plans focused on school climate, and providing focused leadership in this area for us. You know, just recently Gallup reports showed that students who strongly agree with the, with two statements, that my school is committed to building the strengths of each student, and I have at least one teacher who makes me excited about the future. Students who strongly agree with those two statements are 30 times more likely to be engaged in school as students who disagree. That's the focus of the school climate work, you know? That's the, it goes much deeper than just the, I don't want to say touchy-feely, but how, you know, sort of those things on the surface. Students who are, who feel positive, who feel that, and understand that the school cares about them and their success as individuals are that much more likely to be engaged in school and to ultimately, you know, excel and succeed and excel in the work that they're doing. So. Also mentioned briefly the supervisory aides, two of them over at the middle school, due, again, to increasing enrollment. You know, when the enrollment increases, that means more students in the hallway during passing periods, that means that more students at each of the lunch waves, more students at recess, more students at, in all different areas of the building, and so it does create a demand for increased supervision. And all those students make a mess. So, last year we deferred a custodian at Saks as part of, in part of our budget deliberations. We feel, looking at the numbers a bit, you know, currently over at Saks, they clean an average of 33,000 square feet for every eight-hour shift, which is above the industry standard of 25 to 28. So my rough math, this position would bring the average to about 29,000 square feet, just north of the industry standard, which is a significant improvement, especially given all, all of those, all those kids. So all told, the staffing altogether, looking at it and adding these things up, comes to It equals .4% of the overall 5.0 proposed increase. And they are, as I mentioned, most of them at least, respond, direct responses to our enrollment needs. We're also always looking at ways we can reduce, and I just, just to make that point as well. For instance, we are looking carefully at our special education teaching assistance and how they're being deployed, and we're looking to see, we're confident, we anticipate at least, being able to reduce at least a .5 into next year, maybe a little bit more as we take a look at it. But we are consistently looking at and looking for opportunities that exist when students either are coming in or out of our district, or other ways that we can combine those services in order to create some savings. Okay? So, this is a mess, and so I just wanted to show how complex everything is that goes into these salaries and the salary lines. This one's a little neater. If you take a look at this, it just, it gives you the certified salaries, non-certified salaries, and overtime. And you see the increases here and what's happening. I do want to say the overtime is going up, going up a bit, and real, just in looking back on the last couple of years, in the slide before you can see, you know, our overtime ran, our custodial overtime ran around, well, in 13-14, our actual was 239. So we budgeted 150 this year. We are tight at best at that 150, so we are anticipating, you know, going forward, the need for a little bit more money in there. Okay? And that's salaries. How are we doing? So another, the other significant, our next significant budget driver is our benefits. As I mentioned, it's an increase, significant increase, 1.6 million to our health, health insurance account. It's an increase of 12 point, almost 12 and a half percent. We are, we do continue to pursue cost containment measures. Over 80% of our teachers participate in the high deductible healthcare plan, and we have got aggressive premium share agreements and plan designs with every one of our of our bargaining units. For instance, for instance, teachers pay eighteen percent of their high deductible healthcare premium. Food service and teaching assistants pay twenty-one percent of their PPO. Secretaries and custodians pay twenty-two percent, and administrators pay twenty-three percent of the, of the costs for the plan. So that is, that's been an aggressive stance that we've taken through the years in our negotiations with the different unions. And I think you would see that it's certainly above what you'd see in most contracts. So Steve Rinaldi was with us last year at our last meeting, and he will be back on the twelfth to get into more detail around this. But I just wanted to, to make a point around the health insurance number. So we're currently budgeted at ten million dollars in our healthcare, health insurance line. And the, this preliminary budget proposal asks, brings that up to eleven-point-six million dollars. So it's sixteen percent increase. Steve's numbers are a little different because he's looking at actuals and we were looking at predictions here. The last year's proposed budget was ten million, nine hundred and thirteen thousand. And then, as you know, we used some money from the reserves instead and did some other things, which really have worked out well. But should you think that our healthcare costs are running wild with this, the sixteen percent increase, when we put that money together on that proposed budget, it winds up being a six-point-five percent increase year to year. So instead of being two percent of our overall budget, it would have been point-eight-seven percent of our overall budget if we, you know, had, hadn't done that fully funding. Not saying we should have, but I think that's an important piece to the conversation, which we can have in more depth when Steve's here next week or tonight, if you like. But that's, it's just important to note, because when you see that sixteen percent number, I think it's, it's easy to quickly jump to assumptions that something is spinning out of control. But actually, it's been our, our decisions as we've looked to supplant some of those, the costs of the plan with the healthcare reserve, which again, I'm saying, may have been absolutely the right thing to do and may be the right thing to do going forward in some limited way based on conversations that we're able to have with Steve and decisions made by the board. But to put it into that context, I think is important. So in summary, our benefits, driven by our health insurance. And there we go. Okay. All right. Contracted services are going up slightly, and that slight increase is due to the, to our planning for teacher negotiations coming up and custodial negotiations that are coming up. We actually have four different contracts that are under, that go into negotiation in this, in this year, in 2015. Tonight, we'll meet in executive session to discuss a little bit around our first couple. And then the custodians and teachers, we anticipate being a little bit later. Teachers would start in the summer, so certainly that would be there. Okay? And there is a little bit of savings here as well, as we look at our in-house payroll initiative. We pay ADP currently a hundred thousand dollars per year for, for the payroll processing. And as we look to, to bring that in-house, we're reducing that cost by fifty percent going into next year. And that is just the summary page of the contracted services. Our property services includes things like electricity, heating fuel, some others. This is also where we have our, the possible pool rental costs if the YMCA is offline next year. And also includes fifty-nine thousand dollars of project work at the schools next year. The project work, if you take a look, is primarily focused on ADA compliance. So these are things that we, we absolutely need to do, and that's our schedule for doing. So as we look at the, at the property services, our electricity number, which we did, we negotiated collaboratively with the town, we were able to get a good rate. I'm sure you've seen the news, probably thinking about your own electrical costs, I know I am. So that's actually, we feel pretty fortunate to have that number at a hundred fifty thousand dollars. I believe without some of the efforts that we've put in the last couple of years, that number would be significantly higher. Our efforts have been in controlling our demand, doing things around demand metering and replacing our lights with more efficient lighting and putting in dimmers, putting in LCD computer screens instead of the CRT screens and things like that, that have had a significant difference on our consumption. Let me talk more. The, I think we had some good news about our heating fuel today. The, we heard from Jen Charneski that they've looked at our, the usage, our usage, the town's usage around heating fuel, and there, we've got to have a few more conversations, but essentially, the, the preliminary conversation is about us being able to reduce that line by a hundred thousand dollars. So we're up fifty thousand year to year, so that would actually put us at negative year to year. So we'd have some savings there, which would be a wonderful thing. And that has to do with consumption and some other pieces. Did I get that right, Nancy? All right. Our purchase services are going up a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. This is being driven by the out-of-district tuition. And this, we'll have some conversation as we go through into the end around the excess costs and sort of the, the budgeting for this and what's the appropriate responsible thing to do in order to accurately reflect this. Right now, this is the gross cost. This is the entire cost of the out-of-district placements for students without any of the excess cost reimbursement. With that excess cost, this number would be significantly lower. And our transportation budget's also in there, and it's increasing a modest one-point-nine-five And there is our purchase services. And you see the six hundred thousand dollars jumps right out. Supplies is only increasing slightly at seven, seven thousand or so. This includes the supplies we need in expanding our STEM program, K eight, textbook updates, replacements for the high school program. But we're also able to find some savings in supplies as we work it through. So if, when you take a look at the, the budget page here, you see we're up a little here, we're down a little there, back and, back and forth as we sort of work the money through. This is where we, we have some trade-offs, you know, as we say, we bought textbooks for an area a few years ago, we take that away, and then we're able to, to add some to the science line, and we're able to sort of move things back and forth around the supplies a bit. So this is obviously a very modest increase here. And we worked to, this is an area that is a cost that we have, but it's not a driver in that we can make some decisions year to year on how to manage this money. And we're decreasing our equipment line by about fifty thousand dollars, because we've been, we've been buying quite a bit of equipment over the last few years, and we've decided that next year, we're really going to focus on putting all of that equipment to the very best use. So we're going to be focusing on using what we've been able to purchase in order to be as efficient as possible. So that comes down a little bit. And then other is the eighth category for the budget, and that's, again, increasing slightly. This is dues and fees, other nonspecific costs like high school graduation, and the online tuition for virtual high schools built into this as well. And we have an eight thousand dollar increase there. Okay? So lots of pieces go into making up this budget, right? We just sort of very quickly went through the objects and the lines within the objects just to have a sense of sort of each of these categories and, and how they all work. But I mentioned the budget drivers before. This is a graph that you probably recall seeing last year. Well, when we talk about our increase of four, a little over four million dollars, those budget drivers that I mentioned, when you look at insurance at one-point-six, salaries at one-point-three, the excess cost funding, the electricity, and then the pool, you're left with two hundred and eighty-four thousand, forty-eight dollars. You're left with point-four percent. And that's a lot of what our conversations are going to be about. And when we think about supplies and textbooks and other things, that's what's in there. That's also, you know, also, again, the fuel oil, which we had some good news on, so that, what it was coming out of there. The transportation increases in there, you know, other things such as that. So the, that number, the four million dollars goes away very quickly as you, as we step it down. So to be honest, I showed, I was showing the presentation to my daughters last night. They didn't like this slide. They thought it was too bland. So they made me do this one. And they wanted color. But I think it shows in the same way how each of these pieces sort of work together and that what you're left with is the relatively thin slice of two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. But again, the salaries do include the new positions. So that is another three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the salaries for us to talk about and to consider. So that's about thirty minutes, and we can go into the capital pieces, or we can have some discussion around the operating first, if you'd like. Whatever the board would like to do is fine with me.
Any preference, anybody?
Any preference anywhere?
Let's stop here and try to delve into what we've already got. There's certainly enough on the table here for a while, and then we can go back to capital.
Okay. Any other opinions? Opposite way? No one seems to be saying anything?
I agree with that.
Let's go on with that, then. Let's talk about this, then.
Good. So I think it is important to discuss a bit about the, the enrollment and the positions. You know, that is, it's a significant amount of money, the three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars or so. The, the Saks, I think the classroom teachers, the, the two seventh-grade teachers, at the workshop, we identified those as a top priority due to the, due to that increasing enrollment and trying, and working to maintain the class-size guidelines. You know, I think these, there were others, as you heard, some teaching assistants and other things like that, that were on the table for discussion that we've, were deferring, given sort of the, the pressing needs that we see here and the belief that we can do some, looking at scheduling a bit and try to find some more synergies that exist there for some of that work. But I'd be interested in hearing, well, whatever the board would like to talk about.
I'll go first on this. I mean, as you had mentioned, you know, we're in the business of education, and we do have an increase in enrollment. So we need to make sure that we're educating our kids to a certain standard, which we developed with our goals. And to do that, it seems like we need to have these teachers in place in order to fulfill that goal. So I think it makes a lot of sense to have these, these are essential positions. You've done a great job of, you know, really, you know, coming down to what's really needed right now at this time at Saks, you know, with the, the teachers, where they are, we have the biggest growth. Definitely, you know, the supervisor aides, again, we're talking about climate, and you want to have a, a safe place for the kids to learn and to be able to learn, and so you have to have that. And you have to have a clean environment, you know, the, so I think those are all, you know, valid, and we need to have that, including the elementary, you know, if we're going to see the same kind of growth we saw this year, we don't want to be caught in a spot where, you know, all of a sudden, we need another teacher and we just didn't plan for it. And it seems like the enrollment plans are saying that this is where we need to go. So I think we're spot-on for that.
I would second that we have always in New Canaan really respected the class-size differentiations that we've had, so that the class size could be, so that teachers would be able to fully meet the needs of the various needs within a classroom and just corroborating what you're saying and supporting it. Other people? Yes, Diana?
I don't really have a question about the additional staff, because I agree, I think that they're all well justified. I, I did have a question about the custodial overtime and as it relates to the additional staff, because I would, I would hope to see overtime decreasing with an additional staff member. So if you could kind of go into the methodology for the increased overtime.
Sure. Would, would you like? My quick response is, we looked back at a few years and said, this is, you know, we look to be a little bit under-budgeted and looking at our current usage, where we're under-budgeted for this year, so trying to bring it to a place that, you know, we'd be more comfortable with.
We would like to try to decrease that number substantially if we can, and we'll make every effort to do that. I think that additional personnel help, but it's not a cure-all. There are so many things going on in the district and so many things happening in our buildings that we are having some additional overtime to try to cover all our bases, so to speak. But we've got some new staff members, that we, we hired one last year, we have a couple down the road for the last couple of years, and I think we've, we've made some strides into trying to curtail some of that OT. So we'll give it our best effort again, and hopefully, we'll be able to bring it down a bit.
Bob, I had a question. I think from one of your prior presentations, that you said that it was part of that overtime is due to just like weather-related things where it's unpredictable, you have to have someone coming in at four in the morning to clear the parking lot, whatever, so the kids can get in and stuff. Is that where most of this overtime, or is it kind of just spread across other things too that, you know?
Our, our maintenance department has been kind of slim over the last six months. We've had a few guys out on workers' comp, so we've, we've had some additional hours of work there just to cover all the work tickets that come through. I'm hopeful that we can get that staff back up to where we need it to be. But yes, it is, a lot of it has to do with alarms going off in the middle of the night, you know, with all the storms that we have, power going out. Power goes out, boilers go down, we're running to try to, to make sure we got all that stuff under control. Again, it's a crystal ball. You look at it, and you're not quite sure. We know what we're doing over the past couple of years, and moving forward, hopefully, we can curtail some of that.
Do you think that the things that we've worked on, the capital improvements that we're breaking down, that any of those have helped, would help in the future to give us some efficiencies, not so many call-in where someone has to come in and repair something? I know we haven't, we have a long list to still do on capital things, but is that something that might be helpful in the future, at least?
The savings that you see through most of the capital stuff has to do with energy conservation, new windows that make it a little more efficient, new boilers, new, new chillers, things of that nature. But I don't think that that is going to have a major impact on the OT.
Oh, okay. I was hoping they wouldn't have to come in at night as much or something, they wouldn't have to do repairs. I saw...
In, in our last statement of accounts, I think I did not point out, but our overtime for custodians for the first half of the year is already well over a hundred thousand dollars. So one of the things that happens, of course, when you've got schools shut down, you've got projects taking place, then you have, and the summers are getting shorter, as we experienced last year, last school year rolled almost to the end of June, and then our start of school, so you really have tremendous amount of push. However, I think that Bob is being an incredible gentleman, not to point out that there are clear restrictions in the contract itself that prohibits us from bringing in temporary workers at a much lower rate when we've got someone out for extended periods of time. We are prohibited from reviewing someone who's been out on workers' comp for a year and a half or two years. There are a number of other labor issues that kind of compound themselves to require just to keep the schools clean, sanitary, and safe to use, use the time as best he can. There's some flexibility as some of our veterans retire, and then we bring new people on so that Bob can have much more flexibility with scheduling, kind of getting more bang for the hours. So the board and the public really needs to understand that there's some contractual constraints that force the use of overtime as well as weather-related incidences.
Thank you. Did I see Penny Rash in your hand was up, and you had a question?
I was just wondering if we didn't, if we were not able to fund the additional custodian position, how much higher do you think the overtime, your over, estimate for the overtime would be for next year? If you've done that analysis?
I have not done that analysis, no.
Probably add to it.
And I think that if, if in fact the position were to survive the entire process, we would look much more closely at the flexibility that we obtain by a new position where we can move them around as opposed to existing custodians... can move them around. As opposed to existing custodians, we can't change their shifts.
Other questions? Allison?
I think, Nancy, that flexibility you just spoke about, I think, Bob, you were able to negotiate that into the last hire, I believe, right? You spoke about that, that the last hire that you, the person that we hired in the, from the previous budget, you were able to have more flexibility in there.
Yeah, the last contract that was negotiated, the new employees, we could put them in a schedule that fit our needs.
Right. And I think, as Dr. Lussey mentioned, we're going to be renegotiating that contract. I think that sheer rights, we're obviously all aware of those restrictions. So hopefully, in renegotiating that, we'll be looking at maybe more favorable, you know, conditions, hopefully. But can you just speak quickly, too? I know in previous years, you had mentioned that you were using some of the custodial staff to do some of the projects that you would have otherwise hired somebody outside to do. So there was a bit of an offset that we didn't necessarily see in these numbers, but there was a bit of an offset to the way you were utilizing those particular people. Are you still using the custodians that way?
Most of that was maintenance work. And currently, well, as of today, I'm down two maintenance men out of five. And I've been working three short since August. So I don't have the flexibility. A lot of that work now, I have to give out to a contractor. I just can't, we just can't get it accomplished. The day-to-day little things that don't seem to amount to a lot, really do. If the door broke, the lock doesn't work, there's a little leak over here, there's something going on. So it's very hard for me to take on big maintenance issues with the in-house staff. I would love to, if we have the right people in place, to do that and show some savings.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Willby? Other questions? Thank you very much. Yes, Scott?
I have a question that relates to the enrollment. I noticed that in the elementary schools, where our class guidelines are 16 to 20 pupils, half of the classes are at or over that guideline. So we said we've got 29 sections at East and 27 at South and 26 plus three at West. If we wanted to add another section, or two sections, or six sections to get those under the guidelines, could we do it? Is there space?
At East, no. And at West, no. South, right now, we're hoping that's where the enrollment jumps, because we do have a little bit of space at South, possibly one classroom that we could take on, maybe two, if we get the window project completed. But as West, right now, we are at full capacity, because we have the three classrooms of pre-K. And at East, we are at full capacity. We always have a little wiggle room with our science room, because we do have two science rooms at each of the elementary schools. One is used by the science teacher, and the other one is used by the classroom teachers when they come and bring their students to science. We always keep that flexibility, so that if we had to go into another space, we know that we could capture that room. But we try not to, because it's a place, science is pretty extensive to set up, and to be able to have that lab already set up for classroom teachers to go in and just conduct the lessons that need to be conducted, is just more time efficiency for the teachers.
So philosophically, I think we either get to the point where we're asking ourselves, are we comfortable ignoring our guidelines, either for budgetary constraints or for space constraints? And therefore, sort of, are we choosing class-size guidelines over, or are we choosing science over class, you know, guideline? And I think that's something we need to look at, particularly in these, in these really young kids. There are a handful. And to have 20, you know, if our guideline is 16 to 20, and we don't have any classes that have 16 or 17, the smallest one we have is 18, and we have four that are at 21. So...
I think we're always looking at the K through two, trying to keep that within that 16 to 20 number, especially the K and the one, because we know of the differentiation that needs to occur within those classrooms, especially in the instruction of teaching of reading. I think we run into a little bit more flexibility with the third and fourth grade. You have to remember that the guidelines for fourth grade do jump up to 24. So we're always looking to say...
I'm not considering fourth...
No, but we always have to look to say, if you increase the third grade to an extra section, the following year, they go right back up to 24 per class. So do the kids get accustomed to having the 21, 22 per class, and move into fourth grade with that 21 to 22 mark? Do you bring it down to the 18 or 19, and then jump up to 24 for fourth grade? So those are decisions that we're always looking at when elementary principals meet with Brian and Gary and myself during the summer months to make those decisions. We're also always looking to say, scheduling-wise, if you have seven sections, that also becomes a challenge in how you go about scheduling for that seventh section, and where do you place that? And that also runs into a space issue with your music, and your art, and your PE. So you can remember that when we had our increase in enrollment at South, we were doing PE in the cafeteria, because we just didn't have that space. So we're always looking at those factors as well, when we're making those decisions about, do we put another section in, or do we say it's going to make the most sense to keep it here at 21, and try to add extra support with our resource teachers or our teaching assistant to help those classroom teachers?
We, we have a pretty big cohort, fourth grade leading, 357. Hopefully, the incoming class will be smaller, so we'll free up a little aggregate space. It still doesn't address the fact that we've got literally half of our elementary schools at or above the guideline. And I think that we just need to, you know, I would feel much more comfortable if we didn't.
Sure.
And I just want to be clear, because I know it says on here, it's the average enrollment per section. So does that mean that there are sections in that second grade class that are above 21, to bring the average to 21? I'm not, I just...
I think right now, we have, if I'm recalling correctly, and I don't have the staff utilization report right in front of me, and perhaps Gary, you have that from October 1st, in which those numbers would be very clear. I think South might have one class over at 21. I think East might have one at 21. So it's not all of the classes are sitting with 21 in it. So you always have to weigh that out, too. When you open up another section, is there enough children, or are you going to have, you know, five classes sitting with 15 or 16 children in it? So that's a factor.
If you've got six sections at 21, or if you've got 125 kids over six sections, which gives you an average of just under 21, if you added a seventh section, you don't go down to 15 or 16, you go down to 18 and change. So you're still, that only puts you in the middle of the guideline. You could add two teachers and still be within the guidelines on some of these.
Right. So I mean, the question would come is, where do the children fall? So you can cushion yourself. We've talked this at Cabinet as well. Do we put in one additional elementary school teacher, and hope that our kindergarten numbers come in with only the five sections at each of the buildings, or do we put in two elementary school teachers? So that was the conversation that we did have at Cabinet and with the elementary principals, trying to plan accordingly. I think the problem that we run into is, we never know where those numbers are going to fall until July. And that is a factor that we continually face.
Well, and just this summer, you know, Gary, Jill, and the elementary principals met at least once a week, if not twice a week, to look at these numbers. It was really the second grade and the kindergarten, and looking very carefully at those. And ultimately, the decision was made, if we had to go up one somewhere, we had one classroom, whatever it was, to go in the kindergarten with the youngest kids, with the understanding that a couple of the second grade would be over by, you know, by a student, you know, as they looked at. So if it's 20, maybe half, maybe, you know, three of them are at 20, and three of them are at 21, but all the kindergarten would be within that range. And that has, that was a conscious decision that the group made, balancing resources and the space demands and needs and all of that. If we were to increase by two sections, you know, that does, it does have other, other costs associated with it, and other, other decisions and things associated with it. As Jill mentioned, you know, the Unified Arts, the specials, you know, those rotations. We're talking about a six-day rotation, and it's no coincidence that most of the grades have six sections. You know, so you do, you build the rotation in that way. When you go to a seventh, it does, you do have to look at changing things, which does impact schedules for people across the district. If it's the right thing to do, then we need to do it.
Right. And if we get additional students come into the program and join any one of these second, you know, will be second or third grade, we could be forced to do that later, with the addition of very few kids, it seems.
Yeah.
You know, literally, a couple of families could alter this. And then, so I'm wondering, isn't it prudent to look at budgeting for that, rather than scrambling, you know? And if it comes out that, hey, you know what, we didn't get as many, or whatever, then it's, it's somehow easier to give it back than it is to get it.
Sure.
Another point that I do just want to point out is that we do try to keep some equity, too. So I think another discussion point that we had during the summertime is, we would have had to increase three teachers, because each of the elementary schools were all at that guideline, as I'm looking at the numbers carefully now. So they were all at that 21 mark. So it, we couldn't just say, we're going to give the extra teacher to South, they drop to 18. We would have had to give three extra teachers, one for each of the elementary schools, because they were all at that mark. So how do you justify that says, we're going to give it to South, but East and West are going to stay over the guidelines? Or we're going to give it to West, and South and East are going to stay over the guidelines? So those are some of the decisions also, that we try to keep that equity as well. And that's where we made that decision this past summer, to go with the kindergarten, because it just allowed all those class, you know, class sizes to come down, and it kept equity across the district, too.
I guess what I'm trying to understand, and I'm not trying to perseverate on this, but I'm trying to understand, what's the rationale for not asking for enough teachers to stay within our guidelines?
Space.
It would be probably about four that we would need to ask at the elementary level. I mean, if that's...
So if we have guidelines that we think are justifiable and proper for the kind of education we want to provide our children, and it's going to take four teachers, I would rather ask the town for four more teachers and let them say, no, you have to exceed your guidelines, than choose to exceed our own advice going in. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Can I...
I'm as conflicted as the next guy. Don't get me wrong. I recognize that if we go up 5% a year, in 14 years, we'll have doubled our budget. We all know.
Can I adjust it? One question to make sure, for clarification. Do you have the space for these teachers, if you hired them? Do you have that space?
It would be capturing all the science labs, is basically what we would end up doing to try to, to increase the sections. I'm looking over at Chris and Jan, who are nodding, because they're already at capacity right now. So would be capturing those science labs to put in the extra section. And those rooms may, those rooms actually would probably, I'm also looking at Bob, because they probably would need some maintenance, because there's, you know, like, the shower, you know, sprays are still in those, that they've been designed as science labs. So it's not just saying, we can take this room, it's an extra room. It's really looking at it from a maintenance perspective as well, to see if it's really cost-efficient to capture that room. So it is something that I would want Bob to look at, as well as the elementary teachers. I'm trying to go back into my past memory of what those labs actually look at. And I was in one the other day at East. But there may need to be some configurations that would have to take place in there.
Can I ask one, there's just one other question on it. Well, I just want to ask this. Is it possible, you had mentioned about having assistants, teaching assistants, when they reached a certain number. And it was particularly special education identified. Is it possible to have, I'm going to ask for the whole thing, special education and educational, so that the special education person would be able to really focus on the children that are special ed children in the class, and then also an assistant that would be focusing on the children? Or is that more expensive, of all the suggestions and options we're talking about? At least it provides the help to the teacher, and allows for those smaller groups particularly?
And I do look back at past history, and I'm, I'm looking at Joanne, and certainly any of the elementary principals can jump in. But when South had increased in their enrollment at kindergarten, and we had already sent out the class placement letters, and we knew that we were going to be over class guidelines, we did come to the board, and we did put in two additional teaching assistants for that year. And we spread them across those kindergarten classrooms, and, and were able to help reduce the class size there. We do have teaching assistants that are currently in the elementary schools, and when they're not on supervisory duties, we do utilize them in those core blocks of time, in the reading, writing, and math, to help in the classroom instruction as well. We also use our resource teachers, our reading specialists, and math specialists, and writing specialists in those classrooms to also help.
Just one thing, Sherry had her hand up first. Thank you. Sherry, it was patient. Thank you.
Actually, I was going to chime in, both of the points that you had made, one, asking about the space, and two, about the teaching assistants, because I, my feel as a parent being in the schools is that the classrooms are getting less help, you know, less time with a teaching assistant, where the, where the teacher is taking aside a small group of kids for a reading exercise, and the teaching assistant is working with another group on something else. So my, I would also like to look at that data in terms of our teaching assistants for students, and how that has, has, you know, trended over time. But I do agree with Scott. I mean, I think Scott's bringing up an excellent point, that we have, you know, a very thorough budget process that we work through, and it starts with the Board of Ed, and we approve this as our budget. And we should be advocating for everything that we feel that we need to educate our children. And it goes on then to a number of funding bodies. And there are a number of steps where those funding bodies cannot add. They can only cut from the budget. So I think that as a Board of Education, we should be sincerely considering the full needs for our students and advocating for that.
So I was just going to say, that the numbers you're looking at, that 21 where we're over, is for this year?
I'm all in favor of adding, I just want you to know. I'm trying to be a good steward here, but I'm all in favor. And I'm, you know, my heart is with the elementary school, wants an elementary principal, so I'm all in favor of small classroom sizes at the elementary level.
But the new projected ones for next year, on page 26, the 2015, 2016 projected, the numbers are all within our pupil-sized guidelines, because they're adding one more elementary teacher. So it seems like, you know, for next year, we would come in, well, yeah, the third grade, but the third grade's going into fourth grade.
It's that large second grade class going into third.
But it brings a second grade, which is, you know, the younger classes, at least more into line of where we want to be. So I guess, again, in the environment that we're in, I feel like they have looked at this and addressed it by adding that one extra elementary teacher for next year. But it's something that we should still keep focus on.
And we still have, we still have classes that are over at guidelines, you know, I mean...
Yes, by one, yeah.
Allison?
We've been doing this dance of enrollment for, for years now. And I think we've tried to pull kind of every trick out of the hat, including redistricting. But I, you know, I think we're, you know, this is just an issue that we're dealing with year in, year out. And I appreciate what you're saying, Scott, and I agree with you. But I think we have to remember, these are guidelines. And they're guidelines we feel very strongly about, and we've tried to stay within as much as possible. But I think Dr. Lussey had mentioned, last time we were talking about enrollment, that we're kind of in an every-other-year pattern. So we have to look at this in terms of multiple years, I think, rather than just look at it in isolation in terms of one year or the other. But having said that, I think we've been in a pattern of, we continue to think that they're going to decline, or, you know, stabilize, and they pretty much keep going up. So we've talked about portable classrooms at Saks, we've talked about, you know, I mean, we've pretty much tried everything. So I'm not sure what the answer to this is, quite frankly. But I think we just have to manage this year to year. I think the staff, I think the administration's doing a fabulous job of managing this year to year. I think I called Greg a magician in our last discussion. But there's only so much we can do. So to Scott's point, I think at some point as a board, we need to discuss what the next steps are going to be, should we run out of space? We've talked about running out of space at the middle school, but we haven't really discussed running out of space at the elementaries yet. So I think that's a topic we, as a board, should address, once we kind of get through this budget.
I also do want to just point out, Allison, that, you know, if we run our schedules again, because we've been doing a lot of work with our mock schedules to try to figure out how we can best utilize that support, we would have to run our schedules again, because we would have to go back and recalculate out the possibility of increase with PE, art, and music.
Right.
So it's not just adding four classroom teachers. We do need to go back. We also need to look at FLESS, and the impact of FLESS, the impact of PE, art, music, computers, library, and science, because that is a part of the special area. So...
Right. So to your point, I think it's a much more complicated problem than it appears on the surface. It's not as simple as saying, we have 20 more kids, let's throw another teacher in there. I think we have to, you know, we've created this interwoven program that all works, you know, together. So I think that's, to your point, it is much more complicated than it appears on the surface.
But if that's something you would want us to do, we're happy to do so. But I just want to make sure that we're pointing out that it's going to increase that special area as well.
And maybe that's something as a board, we want to ask the administration to address, that what would be a Plan B? You know, should we, you know, I don't know if this is what you were kind of getting at, but should, should these numbers come out much higher than we anticipate, what would we in fact do?
We probably should have the plan. And so I think that's a good idea, that if, I mean, if we're thinking portables, or a very minimum of having the teaching assistants, I think that's one. And I wanted to put in one little plug, not one little, a strong plug, to not give up on our science classrooms. That's something we worked very hard on. And there is some, some research that indicates that kids going into science make up their mind in third and fourth grade. And so we don't want to pull that out. That doesn't mean you can change your mind and make it in ninth grade and become a scientist. Those of, those of you listening, and certainly, high schools, teachers would agree with that, there are a lot of kids who take on science immediately. But it is an important area, and we don't want to lose it. So you've got an impossible problem. So you've got an impossible problem. But I guess we're saying, if we're interested in plans, and we're supporting you.
And I would just second that, because when I look at these numbers and stuff, you know, when you're saying that we're maxed out in space, I see that both in the next projected projections you have, you have 29 sections already, both at East and at West. So if it turns out that the numbers are, we have a big move to either of those sides, it's going to change everything up. So we should have something, be ready for that, because that might happen in May or June when we find out the numbers.
And that's why we've always cushioned ourselves with that science lab. So like, we always have held on to it because we know that probably with minor work, we could reconfigure that somehow if we had to last minute, but.
Any other things on this issue? Yes, Jean.
I don't want to give the administration an excuse, but when you talk about having a plan, it seems that there are so many variables that the, clearly, there'll be multiple plans possible, each one with compromises, so I don't know if we should really ask the administration to have a plan this year for what may happen, because it's just juggling balls and it'll be a compromise. If the board wants to have a plan, they probably have to get a plan together which adds more space to the schools in some fashion. But I don't think, again, pursuing a plan for what might happen is of valuable use for their time, because they're going to have to, they will do it, obviously, and it'll be a compromise, and we won't be happy with it, but there's no way around that. There is no nice plan in a package with a bow on it.
Yes.
You know, just add more money, unless you're talking ridiculous amounts of money, there is no.
Perfect plan.
Nice plan, which just solves the problem with all the variables.
Well, I think we've heard several possibilities of things that can happen, and I appreciate you raising the issue because I, again, want to reiterate that this has been something at New Canaan that's been very important to the education system and important to our teachers, I think, also. Very important to the teachers. Yes, Penny?
So I, I guess I would ask maybe if the team would look at, if you look at the class guidelines for the elementary right now, comparing this year and this year's experience to what we're predicting now for next year, if you think we need to add any more aides. Sounds like it's difficult to add additional teachers given the classroom constraints between this read and the next read, if you think that that's a reasonable thing to do.
Sure.
And then I had another, I guess the other place where we did not have any increases, but I just wanted to hear the thinking of the team was, we have growing enrollment, we have growing mandates from the state, we've heard about the burdens that the teacher evaluation program is putting on the administrators, and we haven't asked for any additional, any additional staff in the administration. And so could you just speak to that a little bit, how we're coping with those burdens, we're not having burnout, and, you know, what's your thought is? You all look very vigorous there.
They all look okay to me, yeah.
They did just have Christmas.
It's a great point, and the, as you know, that Temple, as any teacher evaluation system as you put it together, is time intensive. You know, it's, it's all of the, it's the pre-meetings, the classroom visitations, it's the post-conferencing, it's writing it up, it's goal-setting mid-year, end of the year. I mean, I think it's somewhere between 19 and 21 meetings with each individual person, and, you know, each of our administrators supervises anywhere from 15 to 35 people as they go through. So kind of doing that in a way that truly is value-added and a leverage point is something, it can be very difficult. That being said, we've got some of the best administrators in the state, and they're working very, very hard to pull it all together, and I know there are moments where it's more difficult than others. But the, sort of the balance of it, sort of making it work, I think they're doing a remarkable job, sort of meeting, meeting the needs from the teacher evaluation and, you know, still being fully present for their students and their parents and all the other responsibilities. Part of the question becomes, what, what do they give up in doing that? You know, there, that the role of administrator as a principal, as an assistant principal, as a district administrator, whatever it is, that, you know, each piece sort of contributes to the whole, working with students and working with parents and families and being involved with the 504 and the special education meetings and things, and, you know, the teacher evaluation, leading the different departments, doing all that. All of that is, it's all so important in the role that I think it'd be very hard to identify what sort of could be outsourced to another person in order to create more time on the other side. It's the job of administrator, as just like the job of teacher, has gotten incredibly more demanding year after year after year. But they're, they're still smiling. And, you know, we keep looking at it and talking about it. We do continuously have professional learning opportunities for the administrators and now even with the teachers around sort of calibration and, you know, Temple and sort of even balancing the time. This year, we did shift to a digital platform for our teacher evaluations instead of sort of you trying to use Google Docs and trying to have paper back and forth and shuffle it. I think that has helped a little bit in increasing efficiency in that if you have half an hour, you can pull it up on the screen and read it, if, whether you had planned to do it that night or that weekend or not versus having to have the actual paper. So I think that shift has helped a little bit. I think it'd be disingenuous to say they don't need any help, but in truth, I think that they are, the administrators are figuring it out, working together as a team at each building and across the district to, to make it all work.
Thanks.
Are there any questions? Yes, Sherry.
We talked a lot about the elementary needs and, but the biggest increase is the for the four FTEs at Saks. I know you've done a lot, I know Greg has done a lot to create efficiency, and I would love to see a page in here where you're talking about that, and even productivity in general, because I think as a district that we've actually done a lot to take cost out of the system. And I think it's important that as we go forward to the town asking for additional FTE based on increasing enrollment, that they understand everything we've done to create efficiency in the system. I mean, and whether it's the six-day rotation, extending that down to the elementary so that we can have efficiency with special teachers, or the number of things that we've done at Saks. And maybe, can you just talk a little bit about the Saks efficiencies that we've already put in place?
Sure. Greg, would you like to?
I, I think the greatest efficiency that I addressed at the budget workshop in December was being nimble in the fifth and sixth grade as we transitioned from a two-team homeroom system in fifth grade to a four-teacher team middle school system in sixth grade. We've been transferring teachers back and forth between fifth and sixth grade as that uneven cohort enrollment pattern has traveled up from the elementary schools. So that has created a certain amount of instability with regard to teacher preparation. At the same time, in a, in a fiscally prudent manner, we've made best use of our personnel in difficult times. Certification doesn't allow us that flexibility in seventh and eighth grade. So I think that's the greatest flexibility we've taken in terms of exercising personnel efficiency. With space efficiency, I'm not sure there's a place left on the campus that we haven't used for either instructional or non-instructional support. And I think that's, that's a story that we've told well in the last year or two. So it is good to see that perhaps some of the budget resources that we're requesting for the coming year will help level out some of those pressures that we've been, we've been working under.
Thank you. I had a question I wanted to ask. First, let me just ask, are there any other questions anybody wants to bring up? I had a question to ask about the, the excess cost funding and where it's going to be placed and what's different about it, and so we can understand the implications of what it is to our budget.
Sure. Sure. In years past, the excess costs and the funding for out placements, excess cost again is, if we, for an individual student, if the cost of educating that student out of district exceeds 4.5 times our per pupil expenditure in district, then the town, the school district receives back a certain percentage of those total costs per student. So Darlene and special education, they keep very careful track of everything that sort of contributes to the student's education, and if they hit that threshold, then there's some money that comes back. In years past, the budget number for district out placement, out of district tuition, was set net that amount. So we kind of had a ballpark of what the gross number would be, and we'd subtract back anticipated returns from this excess cost grant because it's a same-year grant, so you get it in the same budget year. Most grants come a year later, but this one comes in the same year, so you're able to do that. This year, there was a change in the funding or in the accounting of that money, where it was taken as, on the town side, as revenue. So at this point, until we have that sort of figured out and pieced together, we've put in this budget the entire amount, so it's the gross amount, which increases that number $600,000, which if we, when we have this figured out and we're on the same page, if we sort of go back to past practices, we'd be able to bring that number down substantially because we'd be netting out the amount that we would anticipate back from the state for that excess cost. But this, as an initial proposal, I felt it was important to be very conservative in those, in that area, and, and then sort of let it serve as a catalyst for those discussions and the decision-making around how that will go going forward. We've started to put together the information to share with, with the town CFO around what our current expenses have been and what the anticipated return would be, and that return comes in the late spring.
It seems like a large amount of money that we'd be losing. Is there any reason why the state, in their wisdom, have made this decision?
I don't think it was a state decision. Nancy knows the more intricate accounting details if you.
I see, okay.
Now, the legislature is crystal clear. The, all dollars from the state go to the town. In state and federal grants, they then are required, the town is then required to pass them along to the Board of Education. They are not counted as revenue. The change, and you may recall, in the middle of last year, I shifted the statement of accounts to, to reflect the information that I received from the CFO, which indicated that they are carrying the excess cost as a revenue on the town side, and that it is our responsibility to provide documentation in order for the town to transfer some or all of those excess cost funds that come directly from the state to the town to, and in the terms of the law language, it says, shall not be deemed revenue by the town, but shall be credited to the expenditures of the Board of Education. And so that's kind of where we are at this point in time.
Deanna.
I just have a quick follow-up on that. So why, why would we need to provide additional documentation beyond what has been provided to the state to be eligible for those funds? If they're given to the town based on the documentation that you provide to the state, to me, it sounds like a lot of excess work on all of your part to give to the town to get money that we're entitled to get for students that we're educating.
Well, I think that there may be some misunderstandings about the basis of the law. I think that the law also allows towns to request the comparison of the budget at the same time as the actual expenditures, and that's where we have to pull together that kind of comparison. Dawn is aware of the issue. Our auditors are also aware of the issues. The language of the law is really crystal clear, and so we will, will work it through, and we will ultimately prevail. It's just going to take a few hoops to jump through.
Which is interesting, difficult. I'm sorry that we have to do that.
It's just a change in the procedure. Ultimately, the result will become the same. If, in fact, the town truly wants to count it as revenue, then the board must budget for the gross amount.
Yes, start, yes, Sherry.
So Nancy, I understand the change in accounting, and I, I think there's a fair assumption that the town is not going to count that as revenue, given our understanding in the law. So is it possible for you to give us an estimation of what the net cost increase will be?
Sure. Reduce it by $600,000.
So it would net down to zero? Okay, so.
Which, which would be three-quarters of a percent on that 5% increase.
There's also the time, as Deanna's mentioning, the time of your office and other people who have to concentrate and to take their eye off the other balls that they're balancing.
And again, it's, it's kind of a shifting. I don't believe that there's any intent to, other than it was a change in a perspective, the perspective had worked for a number of years. I think as both the town and the board are trying to improve how we account for things, perhaps we need to have further dialogue.
Okay. I see another thing. Allison.
I'm just curious, Nancy, were you consulted, or was there any dialogue with the Board of Ed or anyone on the Board of Ed before the town changed this longstanding practice?
No.
Something I think we need to think about in terms of, we keep talking about collaboration and cooperation. I know as a board, we're making every effort to do that, so I think maybe that's something we should talk to the town officials about and just make people aware, too, that I think Nancy and her staff are, to Deanna's point, are already overworked tremendously, so to add a burden to your department unnecessarily is puzzling.
We can work it through.
I know you can, yes. It's likely to be able to do without having to do any work.
Yes, Scott.
I have a slightly different request. This pretty page that your daughters suggested you put in, I think is, is an effective one. Could you add for us, if it's not to us trouble, the percentage of the increase of each item? So for instance, the health insurance increase is almost 40% of what we're asking for, whereas new initiatives is 7% of what we're asking for. And if you could just add those percentages in there, I think it would be helpful.
Sure.
Are there any other questions, suggestions about tonight?
Well, and I do want to, as far as the process goes, just, Sherry, again, we, we have a meeting that we were scheduling for a week from tonight to get, be more in-depth around the, the Capitol a little bit. Steve Rinaldi will be able to come, some others, and we'll get into that. And then another discussion, of course, on the 20th for the second vote. If any questions come up in between, if you send them to me directly, you know, I'll communicate to whoever I need to communicate with and get the answers back to you, to the full board as, you know, within a couple of days so that we can sort of keep the conversation going, as it were. But I just want you, this isn't your only opportunity for us to have the discussion as well. So please feel free to send any questions, and, you know, I'll send the response out to everybody. We'll also, well, yeah, we can have the discussion more on the 12th and go from there.
Thank you.
Just, again, just in terms of the presentation, not, not just a question, you know, the increase that you have, you know, shown for the electricity, heating, fuel, you know, there's two parts of it, like you said, is that, you know, one is that we, it's the rate of usage, I mean, there's a rate that there'd be charged in the usage, and you said we've had gotten some great efficiency with the usage. It's hard to tell when the numbers are all put together into one and we just get a big increase. I don't know if it's possible to show that, you know, that how our usage has been the same, or, you know, it's, it's holding still, and it's just really the rate that's increasing, and that's why we're getting those expenses? Just illustrate that. And then also on this, I'm not sure in the final presentation, whether some of the stuff gets also included into this together, or?
The presentation into the binder?
The binder, is that?
Some could, sure.
They melded, or? Because this is a great summary page that you had, you know, for the budget with the eight points. It'd be great to have, because then you have the summary one, and then you get into a lot of detail that's, you know, has a lot of information. It'd be great to have an intermediate page in between, which just shows like the high points of what each section, so when I look at property services, and I think, God, that's 10%, what do we have in property services? I know that it's fuel costs, and so that it, that's why, you know, I can relate to the 10%. So just some of the cost centers that you have, this is back here, which breaks it down, we have an intermediate page that says, you know, property services include these cost factors, which are listed here, because in the following pages goes into all the details, and it gets hard to get a... all the details and it gets hard to get a bigger picture of it.
Sure. We tried to pull some of that out in the narrative that's included with each of the cost centers. If you look up right above it, there's a bit of narrative that sort of might describe a significant increase or decrease, but if there's other ways to highlight it, we certainly can take a look.
I think that, yes, I'm sure I didn't see.
Just one thing, I just wanted to commend the administration. One of the things that jumped out at me in our budget book is that anywhere that, and we were doing the budgeting by object or budgeting by cost center, any place that looked like we were increasing the budget, it was very obvious that there were, you know, there was a tremendous amount of effort made to offset those increases. So we saw there were a lot of decreases in certain areas too. So I just want to commend you on that. I know sometimes we don't, we don't talk about that. Sometimes we always talk about how the budget goes up because we all hope that it doesn't, but it has to. But I appreciate, and I know we all appreciate, the effort that's put into the offsets to minimize the increase in the budget. So thank you.
I think, I think the work that's been spent, the hours you've all put in on this budget is just tremendous and we're very, very grateful for you for doing it. The narratives describe what the programs are like, if there's someone who doesn't know about the programs, the things that are happening that are going, that are causing us to have to raise costs, and as Allison mentions, the things that we've been saving on to try and balance those off. So compliments to everybody who's worked so hard on this and we appreciate it very much. I think we're ready at this point. Is there someone who would like to, we just move that?
I'm going to move quickly.
Oh, capital, gee, that was fast to speed through that, right?
That was faster than I could do it, yeah.
He was sitting there thinking, maybe I'll go home early. Sorry about that.
But I'll, I'll be moving pretty, very quickly through this because again, on the 12th, we can really dive into, and with different questions around the capital a bit, but it is such an important part of our budget that, you know, I think it does need to be just shared a little bit tonight. So we're looking at three different areas for the capital, the ICT budget, our facilities, five-year capital plan, then transportation, special ed vehicle replacement schedule, which came up at the workshop and we talked about a bit. The, first, just as a very quick reminder, last year, we, we separated our ICT department into two different departments. We have our digital learning department, which is based on, in classroom curricular, it's the application of the technology, and then we have district technology services, which is the support and the, the implementation side. So you've got sort of a development side in the digital learning where they're developed, that's the curricular applications, then you've got a support side in the district technology services. So that, although this is operating, just that's the difference there, so that no one's confused. The digital learning is a new cost center and it will be in the back of the cost center sections, and district technology services is the, the technology department, used to be called the ICT department. Okay? So in the ICT area, we're looking at our, the significant costs is our phase-two network upgrade for elementary schools. Similar to what, the work that we did around the high school in Saks, we're looking to increase the bandwidth and the coverage for the, the network at the three elementary schools. It helps us to prepare for what we know is coming, which is the smarter balance testing and the, the cut down on the number of days and the time away from class that it takes to administer these assessments, be able to hit a grade level simultaneously. We've tried that at Saks this last year, or this current year, and it's worked well. We're looking at, this, this enables us to sort of capitalize on many of the investments that we've made in technology at the elementaries, just like we have at Saks and High School, and a sort of future-proof going forward, at least for, you know, the foreseeable future. There's always something new that pops out, but it helps us to sort of catch, be where we want to be and be prepared for what's to come. So similar to, again, the work that we did at the element, at the middle and high school, we're looking at working in the, the network closets, increasing the speed between the, the individual closets, the sub closets and the main closet, upping that, the speed at which the data can travel there, which will help to eliminate bottlenecks, and then also looking at our wireless coverage. And that's sort of the, the key in doing this kind of network work is to identify where the bottlenecks can and do occur and to look for the ways to alleviate those. So that is a significant item in our capital request. This is our five-year capital plan, and I want to, I'm showing all five years because you can see, this year, we are requesting the $200,000 that was forecasted in last year's five-year capital plan. And then going forward, we're looking to smooth this number out to around $150,000 per year to make it a predictable cost for, for the town and for us to, and we believe we'll be able to leverage that in order to sustain the technology that we have. We've talked about Saks and the need to hire teachers. Well, if we hire teachers without freeing up some classroom space, we're going to be in trouble on that end too. The, if you look at the other capital projects here in 1516, that $59,800, that money is specifically for the mobile carts and that mobile solution for Saks, for the world language lab and the, and the lab that's off the library, to enable us to pick up the two needed classrooms. You see, two years out in 1718, that number appears again because we're anticipating all will go well with this, and as that enrollment continues to climb, we'll need two more rooms. This will enable us to recapture those rooms and have four, four total rooms for the students. The infrastructure upgrade there in 1516, that $259, is that elementary network at all three buildings, and we did receive a grant last year that, through the technology department, which has been helpful in that too. So our total capital request in 1516 for technology is $989. Again, that's inclusive of that Saks work and the work to upgrade the networks. This is more of just FYI, certainly not going to go through line by line, but it really shows the distribution of the technology lease money that's available. Again, on the 12th, we can get into more detail on this if you like. It's all draft, but it just shows the, the distribution of the equipment. And you see, we've got replacement desktops, we've got replacement projectors. If you think back to the high school, for instance, when the high school renovation was completed and the, all the rooms received projectors, they all went out, well, they're, they're starting to get old. You know, those things start to break down, and when one goes, it tends to go in a, in a stream of others, you know, one kind of starts, they start to fail and they signal that maybe many of them are going to fail. So there's some costs associated with replacing those projectors and, and the general maintenance. We've got, or each of the elementary schools here, and then at a district level, new firewall appliance, which is a significant cost. And then our, continue with our special ed and our assistive technology work with iPads and other mobile devices. The, sometime in the spring, we'll share with you some of the amazing things that are happening with our students through this assistive technology. I saw a video just before the holidays of one of our students communicating with his mother and teacher, who had, was, couldn't communicate at all about two years ago. And it's through this, I think about two years ago, Dar, if I'm right, and it's through these initiatives that we have in special ed and the use of technology that sort of opens that opportunity for our students. It was, it gave you, gave me the chills to watch it. So this is really powerful work that we're doing here. That's the very quick version of the technology piece. We also have our facilities, five-year capital plan. The, instead of sort of trying to cram all of that onto a slide or two, next year, the work that we'll be doing at each location, you can take a look. We do have the entire five-year plan in your binder. It would be a part of the, whatever finally is published, would have the entire plan, but this is busy enough for a slide and I figured that, that would just be overkill. So you see our focus here, masonry restoration work and some curb repair and replacement over at East, and you see the $50,000 for classroom painting. Again, the classroom painting over at South, parking lot restoration, and then masonry These do come from the Silver Petricelli report that was shared with us la, at the last meeting. You see the, again, masonry repair, classroom painting, the gym floor replacement over at Over at Saks, there's a placeholder there for auditorium repair and renovation. Next week on the 12th, we'll also have Jean Chiron and, no, not Jean, maybe not. We may have somebody to share some information with us about that. The, if not, we'll be sharing some information with that, and we'll be doing that soon. But this is the, as you know, the town, town council last year, town bodies agreed to fund a, a small amount, a seed money, in order to do some research and to engage some services around initial plans for the auditorium. So this is, at this point, is just a placeholder and we're waiting for more information. The, the committee has been meeting regularly, they have an owner's rep and they have engaged an architect who's put together the very initial plans, just as a sketch, in order to get a, an estimated cost. Beyond that, and the work in the auditorium, again, more money for classroom painting, curb repair, HVAC valves and some others. Now, if there's other things on the list that don't have money next to them, what that means is that they're in the years that come. Those are in the years out. So for instance, the boiler replacements and other things are in future years. And then the high school remains in good shape, some masonry restoration for next year. So our total projected capital needs, again, with a $4 million placeholder on the auditorium, would be $5.5 million. Okay?
Are there any questions about?
Do you want me to stop there? Okay.
I have a quick question about how you chose which items from the Silver Petricelli assessment made it on the list for this year versus being pushed out. Was it ones or was it?
What we, what Bob and I did was go through and actually sort all of the different projects and articulations that came through the report, looked at first the number ones, then the number twos, and then we looked at and considered some of the number threes. The number ones and the number twos really, we knew that we needed to feed them in to these five years, and there were some, based on Bob's judgment, his, his knowledge of our facilities is, is so complete that some of the items that were identified as number threes started shifting back. So for instance, when you see that parking lot for South School, it's there for the 1516 year because of Bob's discussions with the town, the town's engineer, and saying, if you don't do it soon, it's going to become a major replacement down to the substrate. So I trust Bob way more than, you know, a surface look that says, oh yeah, that can happen five years out, especially the kind of dialogue and, and relationship that Bob maintains with the town engineer and the public works department. So there, there was the start with what we already knew, then there was a folding in of Silver Petricelli, and then there was a reality check with Bob.
Any other questions about capital?
Allison? I'm going to assume that we've shared that report, the, the Silver Petricelli report, we've shared that with the town. I'm just going to, I'm asking in terms of some of the projects that we're doing here because I know we've talked in the past about having discussions with the town about what our capital requests are, just so that we may, you know, may find some savings if, in fact, they're doing some similar projects or looking at doing some similar projects.
I don't believe that we have formally transmitted it yet, but we will. We will transmit it as part of the whole budget process.
Is it online by any chance on our?
I'm not sure.
Because we did discuss it, I think, at the board meeting, and so, just a, just a thought.
We'll make sure that it is.
We could do that and then anybody could go to it. I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, well, that's it as a public document, yeah, it makes sense since the board's already, it's been, the information's been shared with the board. I think it's important that we get that information to the town, just in case there are some savings, or it may, you may end up reordering a few things or, or doing things differently if, in fact, we can gain some savings with the town also. Scott?
Brian, I think it'd be really helpful if in here, we could get a look at the five-year expense capital, you know, per year, what the capital expenses are going to be each year for the five-year outlook.
In your binder, you have those in the back.
Page 123, 24 and 25.
Oh, is it, would you hand it out tonight?
I hand it out tonight, yep. And in the presentation that goes on the web, we'll, we'll have all five years also.
Other question, Jane?
So I have kind of a three questions in, in one. When we come to the, under the capital budgets first page, we then immediately flip to district technology services, which would seem to be operating, so I assume that, that these, one A, are operating actually and that they're probably put in here because, to get a, a wrap around the technology-related aspects, even though it's not capital. So I therefore would assume that these numbers are actually, I don't want to say buried, meaning hidden, or if someone could pick up as hidden, but are actually in the previous operating numbers, number one.
They are. I only put them here because of that change of the new cost center, but they, these numbers are all operating numbers and are included in the operating numbers that you saw.
Okay, so they're, they are above, included in the above. And lastly, it's wonderful that the, the salaries, which are always going up in benefits, went down by $126,000. How did you do it?
Well, in creating the new cost center?
Congratulations, but?
Well, thanks, but in creating the new cost center, salary that was a part of that was moved into the new cost center. So it's really an accounting piece, the, because what, the digital learning is a new cost center this year. And so took the district technology services and pulled that out.
And where'd they go to, again?
Down below. So from the district technology services total salaries and then the digital learning total salaries. So those were, they were one.
But that's not, but that's, that's only showing a, a 7.4% increase.
Well, and partially, as we have indicated to the board, actually, I think I've mentioned it a few times, that as we're reworking the entire staffing database, we're going back through it again. Actually, that's our job for this week, and we expect that there will be some changes in some location codes and possibly some object codes as well. So you will probably be seeing some replacement salary pages. We've accounted for everyone, but they may not be in the exact right bucket at this point in time. Stay tuned for next Monday.
Any other questions? Yes, thank you.
There's a question I had on the previous thing. You're talking about the one and two priorities, that you're looking at the three. I just want to make sure, did we cover all the, in this five-year plan, the one and twos, or was there anything that you pushed off?
There were a few things, and I need to go back in. But I can, we can give you a complete list for next Monday of things that were not included. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Scott?
Yeah, that makes a question. Didn't we have oil tank removal? Wasn't that a higher priority than five years out?
Actually, in the Silver Petricelli report, it indicated that within the next five years. So you'll see that the boiler replacements, the domestic hot water boiler replacements, as well as the oil tank responsibilities are all in the fifth year, but you should know, and Bob can keep me honest on this, all of our tanks are sticked daily. They are clearly not in a leaking position. Should that change in any instance, Bob will know it that day. You can tell if there's water coming into a tank. Bob, did I, did you want to clarify my statement?
No, I think you did a great job. And Bob, while you're doing that, if you could talk to the idea of, is there a partial fix? Could we get, could we put above-ground tanks in, abandon the other tanks without digging them up and testing, you know, just literally empty them and leave them for another time?
Yeah, you can.
But put the new tanks in and start using those.
You need to get a special permit for that, and they don't readily give them out. They'd like to see them come out, the state, but we can look and get a number. We also should get a test performed on them. They haven't been pressure-tested in the last two years, so I'm planning on having them done very, very soon. And the other piece of the whole puzzle is that if the gas main
And the other piece of the whole puzzle is that if the gas main comes through, and the town decides to go with a contract with the gas company that's all in for gas, we'd have the opportunity to have to abandon the tanks because we couldn't use them any longer.
Do we have insurance in case they leak?
Well, we have, in combination with the town, some insurance. Again, the fact that we have daily procedures so that if there's any indication that there's water coming into the tank, which means that oil's going out of the tank, then the action that would, would be called into place, obviously, you bring the health department in, you bring the DEP in, you, you know, you marshal all, all of those folks, as well as notifying your insurance carrier.
There are specific underground oil tank leaking insurance policies. We might wanna look into that.
I just, 'cause I wanna follow up on this oil tank, just because in a previous existence, I dealt with this a lot, and it was, it was a huge deal. And, and if it's leaking, if we find out it's leaking tomorrow, what happens? Because I, I get it that we're checking it daily, but if it's leaking tomorrow, then what happens? Because I, I just, I would see this item being moved up on the list, because it's either leaking or it's not, and-
Correct. We would call in a vendor, have the vendor come and check, and give us an idea of where he thinks it might be leaking. Could be leaking in the piping, could be leaking somewhere at the spill cap.
Right.
We have not seen evidence of that anywhere. But I do have, we pressure-test them. You pressure-test them, it'll tell you whether they're leaking or not.
But I get, to answer your specific question, what do you do? The first thing you do is you bring your oil company in and you drain the tank, so, so that you minimize and contain. Now, these are also double-walled tanks.
Fiberglass tanks.
So, again, if the inner tank is leaking, it's leaking into an outer tank, so that at least some of my experiences, and Bob can, again, point me on the straight and narrow, a lot of times, it's joints in the pipes, it's the fill caps and things like that that create more of a problem, because those tanks really are very, very sturdy. But again, you just drain the tank. That at least stops whatever the problem is, and then you have to dig down-
Right, you have to remediate.
And find out, has, where, how deep, what locations, is it one small location? I had a tank that got into the water table, which was not a pretty thing. It's a very scary thing, absolutely.
I also think that you may have experience with some of the older steel tanks. Fiberglass tanks are a much different situation.
Okay, Sherri.
I just had a question about previous year deferred costs, and this is, sorry, this is going back to Dr. Lutzey for the overall budget. Bob, you look tired, go ahead and sit down. But previous year deferred costs, I know, for example, we mentioned in here for the custodial request that that was previously deferred. I think there were other costs last year that were deferred as well. I think there was like a SACS FTE that was deferred, and I'm assuming that we went through all those deferred costs and either built them back into this budget or decided, you know, that we no longer needed those. I know, for example, we had a deferred cost last year for a part-time communication role that I don't see back in here, but if there are, were, were there other deferred costs?
The other one was what Penny mentioned before, the student deans and some assistance for the administrations in the, in the implementation of TEPL for the administration. So, that was, that had been deferred last year and the year before, so.
And other than that, there were no others that we decided that?
Nothing that, no, we did review that, we did discuss that. I don't have it at my fingertips, but.
Is that something we might want to have, just for the board to review, or something to keep in mind, so that we can again say to people, these were things that were deferred that we thought were important? Is that what you think?
Yeah, I think the follow-up would be helpful, for example. I mean, you obviously discussed and decided, made a conscious decision that you didn't wanna ask, you know, for that communication role. But it would be helpful follow-up, I think, from year to year.
Sure, we can have that on the 12th, we can put that together for, for review, sure.
So, people could understand that there've been sacrifices made on this, because-
Right.
These were things that were discussed that we thought were important, but haven't happened, or have been able to be put onto the budget.
Yeah, and we, we did have quite a few lengthy discussions, and it was, we kept going back to the same place, middle school enrollment.
Right.
Yes, we had to, the priorities had to be put in place, and so, we understand that. Are there any other questions, Allison?
I agree with that, because I think sometimes what happens is people think when we get to the town, that's the first, or when we get to our first read or our second read, or we get to the town, that's the first time that anyone's looking at, at taking things away from this budget or making cuts to this budget. So, I think it's really important that we put a deferred list, not just from perhaps what we, we, I don't know if we necessarily need to look at what we didn't add from last year to this year, but I think we definitely need to put in what you discussed or what you initially had wanted and what was requested versus what we're actually seeing.
Sure.
Because sometimes also that plants the seed for next year, I think, which is helpful. Just quickly, the other thing I wanna say, I wanna commend Nancy on these additional cost centers that we're seeing in this budget. I think it's really helpful to see, I'm thinking security and world languages, and as well as what you've done with, with technology. But it's really helpful, I think, as a board member, to be able to see the breakdown of some of those particulars. So, we keep working toward greater and greater transparency. I know it's more work for you and for Frank, but we greatly appreciate seeing that information. Thank you.
And, you know, along similar lines, just to note, the, along with the transparency comes an amazing amount of complexity. You know, when you've got each one of these pages, there's different Excel call-outs that go to different files and pull all these things together, whatever. So, that's why the new pages tonight and why there'll be others, you know, as we go forward, because it is such an amazingly complex report to pull together. As I said, those initial pages were correct, but as we get into the, the fine detail, Frank and Nancy have been working around the clock to pull all this stuff together, so.
I think we understand the dynamic process, so.
It's a good word.
We, we look forward to the future.
Thank you. I just wanted to kinda echo again on that, 'cause I don't think it can be said enough. You know, when, when we got these booklets and stuff, I went through it, and I was kinda like, I have so many questions, 'cause I don't understand. So, it's not just even just the data, but it's analysis of the data, which, you know, you're getting this new print and really figuring out, these are the things and really highlighting what they are and explaining it in a very concise manner. So, again, I know it's a whole teamwork putting it together, so again, you know, kudos, because this is very comprehensive and understandable, you know, those who are in finance and even those who don't, you know, have that as their expertise, so, thank you.
I just wanna say, Allison, I think it's really important that the public understand that as this new superintendent, you were able to put this budget together and articulate the information you were with having had Nancy out for a while and having had Gary out for a while, and still to, to be on time and to have this kind of information to us is very commendable. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure the whole board would second that if we went down and asked.
I'm blessed with an amazing team. So, I have one more small capital piece to go through, and it's our-
Yeah.
Transportation, our special education vehicle replacement schedule. As you remember, we talked a bit about leasing the vehicles and some of the issues that we're coming across with leasing. So, we, we had a leasing schedule that you received on the, at the workshop, but what we've done since then is create a vehicle replacement schedule, with the understanding that if we're not leasing, that we, we do have to replace these vehicles one way or the other. And if it goes in as a capital item, then these would be some of the costs. And we can talk this through, again, more on the 12th, but just wanted to get the, get the conversation started with what that might look like in order for us to, to be able to replace our vehicles. We were scheduled to hit three this year, and then another three next year, due to really the age of the fleet, and I think a few of you commented on that a bit, that last, at the workshop, that these, these vehicles are used all the time, you know, transporting kids all over. And, you know, none of us wanna consider the risks involved or associated with these vehicles going into a significant state of disrepair. We've already got, we've already been spending quite a bit on sort of repairs for that, for the equipment. We've had tie rods go and some other things, as I think Roy talked about a bit. So, this is, we put it in capital instead of in operating as a lease, and these are the true replacement costs, not a lease cost. Again, we can have further conversation about that on next Monday, if you like, or.
Any questions now?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Scott.
Any questions?
Sure, go ahead.
Why some Ford, some Chevys, some Chryslers?
Those are the actual, those are the actual vehicles that we will be replacing.
Right, but if, so if a Ford Excursion goes out, do we, do we look at what the best, if a Suburban is cheaper, do we get a Suburban, do we, do we replace a Ford with a Ford? Do we care?
At 9:30, he has this question.
Roy will answer these questions.
Oh, good questions. The, first of all, the Ford Excursion is no longer made, right? It was the van that was chosen in the beginning. We have now, as you can tell, we've kinda migrated to the Suburban as the vehicle of choice. It's large enough to accommodate transporting up to seven kids at one time, all in the back, by the way, 'cause we don't allow anybody to ride in the front seat. And, and so, what we're really doing is moving over towards the Suburban as the vehicle of choice. We do have a couple of Venture vans, or, you know, it's a little Chevy Venture. It was a van, two vans that were bought used, and they're really an inexpensive van, and they, and they have done well, but they're just front-wheel drive, not all-wheel drive. So, that's a bit of a disadvantage when we're going on the open road. So, bottom line is, we prefer the, to go with the Suburbans, and, and if another vehicle comes along, we can do that too, but we'll always look for the best one.
That's all put out to bid?
It, it, yes, it goes under state contract price, so it's the best price we can get for that vehicle. It is a good price for, when you, if you really wanted to go out and buy the vehicle on your own, you pay a lot more than that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I know that these vans have been around for a long time, so we're glad to see, I think we all, when we found out the years that they were new, really endorsed this purchase, as we talked about it.
Could I just, could I just take a moment to thank Nancy for this plan? It's, it's, it's a response to a request that I've had for several years now, and I think it's wonderful to have a plan that goes five years out, so that we can be assured that the vehicles that we have are in good condition and that we don't have, I don't have to be concerned. So, thank you, to Nancy.
That, that goes for all of us. I think we want you to know that we care about that, too. Thank you, just your hand up.
I just had a question. You know, you presented this capital budgets in three different sections of the three different areas. When we put it out to the town, is it all underneath one, or is it under three different umbrellas, or how does that work? I'm not sure.
Last year, they actually considered it as two separate budgets. This year, I anticipate that they will consider it as three separate budgets. You may recall, for instance, in the five-year facilities capital budget, they shifted some of those dollars into capital non-recurring. They shifted some of those dollars into leftover money from the prior year, and those kind of things, as opposed to technology. They really focused on the lease and then the actual purchase of all of the equipment needed to outfit and improve SACS and the high school. With this particular one, I expect that we will have some significant discussions.
Any other questions about the vehicles?
Great. Well, we've discussed the, the grants, so I'm going to move right through that. And then, the last piece has to do with the, some of the funds that we have. As you know, we had, these are the income statements as of June 30th, 2014, not really, profit and loss, I guess it would be, right? So, here it shows that our lunch program is operating with a, it is small positive here, which has been a goal for the board, to work that through. That has to do with Bruce working very hard to contain costs. It has to do with the fees for the prepay program. We were absorbing those fees and now they're being passed on, which is more, much more common practice. And it has to do with recouping debts that students rack up and trying to get some of that money back. So, this is the quick breakdown of that. Another fund is our facility rental. So, here we've put just the vendors who are over $5,000 throughout the year. It shows you sort of that, the total income there and the expense. We run at a slight loss here. We had some money that we spent, the $18,000 that was reinvested in the facility, is, was the purpose there. We have a, a balance here that we're working to draw down. And then, we also have our summary return program. Again, its profit and loss statement on this last year was $116,000.
Are there questions about any of those funds?
And again, I'm very happy to have more conversation about these on the 12th, or anytime in between.
I, yeah, question, Scott?
I have a question dating back to the other stuff, and I promise it'll be answered. I noticed that the, the GED included the budget an increase in the extracurriculars. Is there any reason to believe that that would include the squash, the skiing, any of those?
No, it, it doesn't. As, in conversation with Jay, and he's welcome to talk a little bit more, you know, that, the squash and the work that they're doing, they're working to sort of establish themselves and looking out, as some of the other, the other clubs have done, as Jay talked just a little bit more at the workshop. At this point, it doesn't include additional money for those. We've got to, we're still sort of, sort of helping to nurture that along in a couple of different ways. And then, the understanding of the, sort of the ramifications of that decision, as we talked about a little bit, you know, there, the other groups that are similarly positioned in what, what some of those needs and expenses would be. So, that's not, it's still an ongoing conversation. But that money really, I think, has more to do, as Nancy mentioned before, about sort of the, the, putting everything into the right bucket in the, in the pages.
I, I guess the only thing I can say is that I recognize that the squash team is in the world of extracurriculars here at NUCAN relatively new. They have a huge following. The ski team has a huge following, they've been state champs, I think, five out of less this year, or something like that. I think it would be great if we could put some kind of a stipend in the budget for those two. I would just encourage you to look at it again.
I'd like to second that.
Yeah, me too.
I mean, the second page, when we talk about, you know, what distinguishes up, there's, distinguishes NUCAN and public schools, there's a bullet point on 85% of our student body participates in athletics and extracurriculars. And we've got, I forget the number, at least 60 students who are participating in the high school squash program. And I just wanna second that support for a stipend.
Sure, sure.
I think we did, you did put some extra money in the budget, though, I think, for transportation, right, for some of our, there was some extracurricular increase, I think, for-
There was, and there was some of that, some of that increase was for the pool, it was the athletic increase, and there was some co-curricular on some of the travel with our Model UN and debate and some of the others that continue to grow.
Right, so those clubs that have been in existence for, for years and-
And gymnastics.
And gymnastics, Frank was another one.
Are there any other questions or comments on board? Tiana?
I, I appreciate the, you know, support, and I do support all these extracurricular activities. I think we do need to be careful, though, there are a lot of other extracurriculars that you haven't mentioned that haven't been eligible for the same funding like CREW, and they've had to go out and, and sort of establish themselves independently. So, I think we need to be careful to be consistent about how we, we deal with activities, 'cause I would argue they probably have the same number, if not more, participants and have had to negotiate the, the complexities of high school sports and activities. So, and, and I'm sure that there are others that I'm not thinking about right now. So, I think it's really important for us to be consistent and, you know, I appreciate that we all love the sports that we love, but a, as a board, I think it's, we have to be consistent, and that, that would be my only comment.
I would agree, I would agree, just so that it makes it easy for everyone to understand, like, you know, if there's a protocol of what we consider when we give stipends, whether it's how long or established, how many participation of, I don't know what, what the criteria's are, but I think it's worth investigating, looking at and seeing, you know, can we create a criteria when someone gets it, and look at what, things that we do support right now, so that they all are consistent. I agree, I mean, it's, it's-
But I'll, I'll work with Mr. Egan, and we'll, we'll talk through a couple of options in, in this week, and then on the 12th, we, we can talk it through a little bit more. And we'll have some proposals that we can discuss. All right?
That sounds good.
Okay.
Are there any more comments or suggestions or final comments that anybody wants to make?
I just, you know, on some of these, the incomes and losses on these things, I'm hoping that we're looking at also using some of these things when we do make money to reinvest, like you did with the, the equipment, just like with, with the cafeteria, there's gonna be breakdown in, in food, whatever, string, whatever, so that we, we look at, that, that's, we're gonna need that, that- look at, that, that's, we're going to need that, that money later.
Right, and the key is for it to be reinvested into the program, whatever's generating the, the money that way. But yes, that is something that we continue to look at, and some decisions that we've been making, and will, yeah, we'll continue to make. And I think food service is an excellent example. You know, that's equipment that needs, we, you need to reinvest there. We need to be sure that we're updated and serving our clients.
Compliments on the food services, and the changes that were made to have that be profitable, and that we can reinvest on equipment, which is what I know has been your goal since working on that.
And we're reworking with Bruce and Bob collaborating very effectively, so that we're continuing to focus in with the large number of students at Saks and Waze. I think Bob said it was a very attractive hole in the wall, because we're going to have another area of serving in the cafeteria, pulling some kids out of the servery area. And again, we, we continue to try and analyze what we can do, how we can do it better, and it's a, it's a great partnership.
That's terrific, very creative, very creative. Yes, Penny?
I was just wondering, on the facilities rental, what is the line item that's operating transfer out to the town of Duquesne for $10,000?
We pay the town $10,000 every year out of that account.
That's just, we've historically done that.
Just historically, we've done that.
Okay.
Thank goodness, it's not inflation-adjusted.
I don't have a rationale for why, but, but it wasn't something to stick a spear in the ground and draw the line.
Can we, can we ask, can we revisit that policy, and ask whether or not we need to continue to do that, or if we could use that money as reinvestment into the facility, or, I mean, is there?
Is it like a lease?
I mean, can we just get clarification on that policy?
We, there is no invoice, there is no, I don't.
Then there should be no payment.
I don't know a rationale. We just write out a check.
Well, it would be good to reinvest it into leaving the Saks auditorium, you know.
Yeah.
I'm moving right along, and I know I tried to move a little bit too quickly the last time, but we have some, we have a wonderful agenda ahead. And I think that, at this point, we are ready, I think, to have a move the, the budget. Move to approve, and if I could have a move to approve the 2015-16 superintendent's proposed budget. Scott, so moved, and we will do that, and the actual voting will be when we meet on the 20th.
Second?
Yes, we need a second. Allison, how about your hand was up there with her, right with them? Second with Allison Bedula. We will then do the voting on that on January 20th.
Great.
Moving on to the next.
Great, well, I just want to thank the administrators, who have been here throughout the evening, and all the cost center managers, everyone else, who stuck it out till 9:30 to be a part of, thank you all.
Appreciate it. Please feel free to go home and.
Alleviate my guilt a little.
Yes, we know you'll be early in, in the morning.
Not you.
So if everybody can pull out their calendars, our next item on the agenda is the first read of the move to approve the 2016-17 Duquesne and Public School calendar, which has many Dr. Lucy's going to lead us through this, as we discuss with the thought process. This is a, been a busy week with lots of things for this agenda, so we appreciate all your thought.
Oh, thank you. And I'm going to do this from my seat, if you don't mind. But I did want to just share with you briefly, and to put, have, for your initial consideration, our school calendar for 2016-2017, as you likely know, and our policy, it's November of the, we're in November, supposed to have two years of calendars out, but we've been waiting a little bit because of the, the regional calendar piece, and some of the things that have been going on. So I recently attended a meeting on the regional calendar at CES, with superintendents from Fairfield, Monroe, administrators from Greenwich, Darien, Trumbull, Stanford, others. So we, we met together to talk a little bit about the regional calendar and where it is. We talked about the flexibility that exists in the regional calendar, which is the, they would put together, this group would put together the calendar, but then each school district has five days. So after this conversation, went back and sat with some folks to see if we could take their calendar, and with those five days of flexibility, create one that was consistent with our policies, and similar to what we've done in years past. And that's what you have in front of you, is the, the draft of a proposal for our 16-17 calendar, that does meet the need or requirement around the regional calendar, but also it mirrors essentially calendars that we've had in the past. We've used four of the days for flexibility, so there is still another day, if the board, if you were interested in moving something, or doing anything else with. The days that we did use, the days that, the four days we used, that we're, of the five, for our own changes, are the days in February, the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. We put those days in as a holiday for us, which is consistent with our policy, that we'll have two week-long policy, vacations after the start of the year. We also took the 17th, which was a day off in the regional calendar, and made it a staff development day, however, that, but that doesn't cost us one of the flexible days, because it's still not a school day for students. And that's the guideline for that. This calendar would have us with three days of staff work in August, the last couple of days of August, and the school year would start September 1st. It is a year that Good Friday would fall in the April break, and the, it's, it's not quite as long of a holiday break in December as we just had. So we, we are able to do all of that, have 182 days, and have five days built in to that third week in June, if we needed. So, for your initial consideration, I anticipate that we'll have other conversation about it, but didn't want it to, since we just had this meeting, and thought that this could at least get the conversation going, wanted to bring it before you tonight.
Comments, or plus, or suggestions, on one hand? Yes, Sheri?
Just one little question. So, in, is the last day of school, June 14th, as the note indicates, or June 16th?
It is not, it's the 16th.
Okay, so.
Yep, so I can tell you, there are three changes in this that I, I picked up on, on Nov, it's in the text underneath. So in November, on the, the half-day is 11:23, not 11:25. 11:25 is actually Thanksgiving. In May, Memorial Day is the 29th. And then, the last day of school is June 16th, and that's the 182nd day.
So an observation is, I, I very much enjoy the fact that school starts in September, versus in the past, always. Just an observation, so is, is Monday, January 2nd, that's in compliance with the uniform regional calendar? Because that, that could be a school day, that's.
Well, the thing is, the first is Sunday.
Right.
And so the holiday would fall on Monday.
Really?
For observation of the holiday.
For New Year's Day?
For New Year's Day? That's not a, any type of a religious holiday, that's a.
It's in all the, well, it's bargained in all the union contracts.
Oh, I see.
As an observance day.
I got it.
Any others? Heard someone say July 4th, did someone?
It's very similar, July 4th falls on the Sunday, like the holidays.
Same thing. Are there any other thoughts, as you look at this?
I'm going to have three kids in high school.
Yes, Tiana?
I just want to applaud your efforts to, to make this work under a very, what I find is a very unpalatable legislative initiative. And I continue to urge parents to write their legislators, because, you know, this, we were very fortunate to have this work out as neatly as it has this year, but it may not always work out this neatly, and we may not have as much flexibility. So I, I think it's important for parents to be heard, that we don't want to regionalize our school calendar. So please, 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 write your legislators.
Any other? I don't see any more questions or concerns.
I would just add to that, to the regional calendars. I mean, originally, the thought was that it was supposed to be some kind of efficiency, and it doesn't really create any efficiency, so, and it can be detrimental to us, so that's just something else to consider.
Then, are we ready to then, the schedule moved, the meeting, LCD calendar, which is just as a first read? So is it moved also? Yes, moved with a second, Sheri? We've had it moved, and a second. Thank you, Tiana. And we will be voting on that, and the future's on our agenda. Calendar second read on the 20th. Okay. Moving then to our next item on the agenda, is the schedule of the Board of Education meetings.
This is, just a consent agenda item, now, we've already approved the schedule for meetings, but in the schedule that we approved, we did not include the workshop on December 14th. And we are adding to this as well, the meeting next Monday on the 12th. In this way, if something new were to come, and that wanted to be added or adjusted to the agenda, we could do that by making it a regular meeting of the Board of Ed. So, everything else is the same.
Yes. Tiana?
Does the time on the 12th change slightly? On January 12th? Or did I misread that in the emails? Is that going to be earlier on the 12th?
Yeah, is it 6:30 or 7:00? Because one thing said 6:30, and another thing said 7:00.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify the timing on the 12th.
On the 12th, is it going to be 6:30 or 7:00?
Oh, I was, I was anticipating 7 o'clock.
So 7 o'clock, the standard.
It's up to the board if you'd like to change it.
No, it's fine, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Um, Friday, the thing that Victoria sent out on Friday said 6:30.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
So we just need to clarify.
Unless the board says otherwise, I think, we stay with 7:00.
Seven, okay, great.
That's our usual time now, is 7 o'clock. So we're, everyone would then, yes, Sheri?
So just a question slash observation. So this past December, I think there was some, some surprise that we ran into that Monday before the Christmas holiday, and we're doing that again. The alternative would be to have those three meetings on November 30th, December 7th, and December 14th, as we've done, and I believe in all the years past, other than this most recent December. I think, it just was, I think, perhaps problematic for some people with holiday plans, and, and so forth. So I just want to make it as an observation for the board. You could back that up a week, and still have those three meetings.
Yes, that would give you a meeting on the 23rd of November, and then a meeting.
On the 30th.
On the 30th.
Right.
With Thanksgiving in between.
Right.
It's not ideal, but it's probably better than being Christmas week for me.
So we have the 30th, that, the record, the change is being suggested that we have that change on the 28th, is that right? For the Monday?
It'd be November, Monday, November 30th.
Right.
30th and 7th, and the 14th.
Sorry, wrong here.
I mean, those are, those are big meetings for budgets, so I'd want the administration to feel comfortable with it, but if, if it worked for the administration, I think it works for the board to have it November 30th, December 7th, and December 14th.
It moves us up a week. Nancy has your hand up.
Yes, Nancy.
It gives the administration one workday to prepare for the following Monday, which could be just a little bit difficult.
That's tight.
Is there a possibility to do board meetings on the 8th? I'm sorry, would, would board meetings on the 30th and the 7th, and do the budget workshop on the 14th? Is there a reason the budget workshop has to be sandwiched between two regular meetings?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So you're saying, say it one more time, Allison, so we get everybody's sure.
I'm just saying, if we want to change, if we want to move everything up a week, we don't necessarily have to shift the, the budget workshop, so we could have a normal, a regular board meeting on November 30th, a regular board meeting on December the 7th, and then do the board workshop on the 14th. That way, the administration can stay to their normal calendar, but the board won't have to meet the week of Christmas.
On the 21st, it would just be crossing out the 21st. I'm seeing Nancy shake her head.
Well, so are you, so crossing out the 21st, but not adding one on the 30th?
You would.
You would.
I think the issue is around the 23rd, meeting the 23rd, and then, meeting again on the 30th. I would probably be more curious to know about having the.
But can I just ask a question? I'm assuming, I mean, would we be doing another leadership workshop, like we did this December? I mean, they're not.
Probably not.
I mean, is there a reason why we're doing some of these?
We could do our workshops certainly at a different time, and that would take some pressure off.
I mean, that's, and maybe we take this offline, then, and, and discuss that, but, yeah, that's a lot of meetings during the holidays, and when we should be focused on launching the budget workshop process, so if that's an option, that's.
I think that workshop this year was helpful to be before the budget, because it was part of our thinking about what we were thinking about educationally.
Right.
But there's no reason why it has to be right before it. You're right, it would seem to make sense to me that we'd be able to.
Right.
Put a little bit earlier, and that would allow us to not have everything all jammed up at once. And I don't think that affects the administration, as far as the budget process. Any other?
I would actually think if we're going to have that type of workshop, might be good to have it when we're setting our goals, or just before.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, it shows, I think that flexibility could be built right in. And we don't have to name the date of the workshop now, but just keep in mind that that's what we're trying to do. Okay.
But so I think that recommendation would be to take off December 21st, and not add a date, then.
That, that's correct. Or November 30th, you mean, not November 30th.
Right, with a workshop date to be determined.
You know, I think I would want to, having, we, I think we've always had two, after Thanksgiving, we've always had two regular board meetings and a workshop, because there are issues that come up with the budget that we really have to address.
But we don't this time.
Well, I'm just saying that, this, yeah, but you look, this was a pretty power-packed meeting, and we're having a meeting next week as well. So I, I just don't think that makes sense, to go down to one meeting and one workshop for December. Certainly, if, if it made sense to have, you know, one on November 30th, or, or December 1st, or something, but I just don't know how it works with, I mean, getting ready for the.
I think the board's also always taken the tone of, better to put a meeting on the schedule, and then take it off, than not put it on at all, so.
And we have.
If we have anything, I would put the dates on, and then we decide.
Right, and we have definitely taken them off, so that everybody knows that. In the past, we've taken days off, when we didn't need them, when there was nothing there.
Usually in the summer.
Yes, yes. Although we did, we did, you're right, usually in the summer, one of the August-July dates.
Yeah.
So another, another possibility for consideration, we can take this offline, if you like, would be to have the regular meetings on the 7th and the 14th, and then look for another day of the week to hold a budget workshop. So the, because if we take the week of the 21st off entirely, it really gives us just the two weeks in December, again, unless we want to back it up on the 23rd and 30th. I do have concerns about it being, you know, with a, with a one and a half workdays in between, and Thanksgiving, and, and other things, to do that on the 30th. But if we wanted the 7th and the 14th to be regular meetings, and then look sometime between, on the week of the 7th and the 14th, for a day that's not a Monday, to have our budget workshop, we could always try to do that. Does that make sense?
Does that work with people and their vacations and everything? Okay, so, so you're thinking something like December 14th and 16th would be something?
I'm thinking, well, all I'm suggesting is, as a possibility, is a regular meeting on December 7th, and a regular meeting on December 14th.
Yes, and.
And then adding in, at some, at a later date, the, a budget workshop sometime after the 7th, but before the 21st, as, as a workshop. I don't know if schedules would permit that, I don't know if, again, it's at the board's pleasure.
Can I just say, I'm looking at this, what I don't understand is why we have a three-week gap between the October 19th and November 9th? If we're thinking that we don't have, I don't know if there's a holiday or whatever here that I'm not remembering, but you could do October 5th, October 19th, and then do November 2nd, and November 16th, and November 30th. And then you, you get rid of your day and a half, then you have a whole week. So you'd be switching, instead of having three weeks between October 19th and November 2nd, and November 9th, you'd have November 2nd. but you could do October 5th, October 19th, and then do November 2nd, and November 16th, and November 30th. And then you, you get rid of your day and a half, then you have a whole week. So you'd be switching, instead of having three weeks between October 19th and November 2nd, and November 9th, you'd have November 2nd, November 16th, November 30th, then the 7th and the 14th. I don't know if that works.
How does that work with the budget? Would that be okay? The process?
Sure.
I just want to point out that we spend more time talking about our little calendar than the entire district calendar.
I think we're going to get feedback on the district calendar, I hope we do, for people that see something that they're concerned about and let us know.
We're going to vote on this one today, so that our meeting next week is a regular meeting.
Yes, okay. Are there any more comments or suggestions?
So is that a suggestion, what Penny just suggested, that November 9th, meetings being the 2nd and the 16th and the 30th, and then December meeting on the 7th, and then the budget workshop on the 14th?
Okay, the October's going to stay the same as it is, 5, 5 and 19. Then November 2nd, 16th, and 30th. And then December would be 7th and 14th.
And 14th is the budget workshop.
Budget workshop.
Does that work for your preparations as far as the administration?
Okay, has everybody got that down as a, do you want me to read it once more? One more time, last time, October 5th, October 19th, November 2nd, November 16th, November 30th, December 7th, December 14th will be the budget workshop.
I hate to say this, and I don't know if this has any impact at all, but it's an election year next year, and I don't know in terms of our meeting and swearing in new people. Are we required to meet a certain timeframe?
That's right. That's exactly right. We are required to meet.
That's right.
And it will, that's too long.
So we meet on the.
Very good.
Every once in a while.
Yes, so you have to make it the 9th. When is, is the?
Election Day is the, the third. And I think you have to meet right after that to swear in the new people.
On the, on the 9th, right, is that what you're saying? Okay, so.
I thought it was the first meeting after the.
Okay, so November 9th. We got then November, I'll read it one more time and see if everybody wants to fill it in. We've got October 5th, 19th, November would then be the 9th, the 16th, and the 30th. Everybody got that? Because of the election. Okay, 9th, 16th, 30th, and then December 7th and 14th. Anybody think of any other extenuating circumstances? That's a good one. I think that covers it, okay. Are we then thinking that we're ready for a motion and to?
So moved, as amended.
All right. Move to approve, updated 2015, but we have to vote on it in order to have our next meeting.
I think we have to vote on it now.
Yes, we do, so movement, movement for Penny and second by Allison. All those that are in favor, please raise your hands, and it looks like it is unanimous. Thank you all for your ideas. We, if we didn't have all those things in there, we would have probably gotten it pretty messed up, so thank you. We're now looking at announcements.
Sure.
Future meetings.
Yep, as we mentioned before, the, a week from tonight, we'll get, we'll have more conversation about capital and some of the budget drivers around capital, including our health insurance and some of the other things. Then on January 20th, we'll, which is a Tuesday? We will be meeting to discuss further and to approve our, to adopt our Board of Education budget, and to look again at our 16-17 calendar. And we may have an update on South Building and subcommittee updates from Board of Ed.
Okay, terrific. And if you have any other thoughts of ideas of things you want on the agenda, please contact me or Scott, and we will certainly see about adding it, if not immediately, as soon as possible. And now, we need to adjourn to executives, oh, first, comments from the public. No one seems to be doing that. And now, we'll adjourn to executive session in accordance with CGS 1206. The subject to be discussed is negotiations. Thank you, second. Thank you, Scott, all those in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you.